Member Dice?
Here.
Here.
Wait, is this on? Member Marion?
Here.
Member Pats?
Here.
President Affeld?
Here.
And I understand Member Ash will be joining us?
Yeah.
Shortly, yeah. Okay. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, good evening. There is one change I'd like to make. I would like staff and the board to have some more time before we look at item I three, so I'm going to recommend that we pull item I three for tonight. It's going to require a little bit more time for all of us, I think.
And the amendment to administrative regulation, temporary and substitute employee sick leave.
Yeah, we're still trying to make sure we got a good handle on this. All the districts are struggling with this one. There's some intricate details. Some of you may be familiar with these, but I just feel like I want staff, myself and staff to have a little bit more time on this, and I want to be able to get some information to the board before we just throw this in front of us.
Okay. And then I have a request as well. I think for me, it would make more sense if item I one came after items I two and four.
The bonds came after?
The update and the Oversight Committee. At the very least, after the Oversight Committee.
Any objections to that? No?
Thank you.
Just a quick one, I'm sorry. I think it's fine procedurally, just the issue is that we do have people coming at a cer-- people have been told to come at a certain time. So I don't know how the timing will work or not work if we change them around. What, Ms. Tamery, what time do we... Do we know what time they're coming?
Could be a change if they're much slower.
So what are we worried about? The COC? Or the bond? Are there bond people?
You're referring to COC, I think. COC and the bond. And the bond issue.
So the bond people should be here if they're first.
Mm-hmm.
Not now, but I mean...
Right.
They may have to wait longer. But they would be here, one thing. The COC people may be surprised and not here yet.
I hope so. Tom?
Well, why don't we try to put item I one where, member Pat suggested, and we will just be willing and flexible to change it depending on who's showed up when we get to that item.
So I just wanted I one after the COC and the update on the projects.
So it would be after the ECL update. Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, if the motion passes unanimously, we will move I one. We will move I one till after I four, subject to the personnel for the various items being present at the time we need them. All right. Report out from closed session on October 14th.
There were three items discussed in closed session on October 14th. The first item was a conference with real property negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 94956.8. The board met to discuss the Ralph Hawley School site at 1275 61st Street. No actions were taken. The board also met to discuss superintendent's valuation, evaluation. No actions were taken. And the third item was public employee discipline dismissal release pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. The board met to discuss employee release, and no actions were taken.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tamery. Now it's time for public comment on any items not on our agenda. If you have public comment, please come up.
My name's Ames, and I have a child at Annie Yates', and I wrote a letter a while ago regarding the presence of your old website that is competing with the presence of your new website for Annie Yates', and I was assured that that would be taken care of, but I just want to let you know that I was doing an Annie Yates' search this past week, and the old site is still up there, top ranking. So I don't know if you guys have figured out a way to let your old provider disable the... I think it's the something loop. I'm not sure who the provider is, but anyway, it's still up. Probably about a year and a half ago, I... There was an ongoing conversation about introducing International Family Day to either the school district or to Annie Yates' in particular, that in an effort to do so, would acknowledge or recognize various family configurations, including LGBT families. And that is dead in the water, and no one has followed up or pursued that, and I really don't feel like being the only advocate for that issue. I would really, really appreciate if the district was my ally in being in this regard. And then last thing I'd like to say is that this is a very... There's an agenda item that is very important to many parents tonight, and I feel as though there wasn't much notice given, and that this meeting was scheduled on a day in which many parents have devoted hours and hours of time for the Harvest Festival, and to ask them to be here after that is asking a lot, and I feel as though if this district or the board, if parents and students are your priority, and to get that feedback, that I believe it would be really important that if you really, truly believe in having our feedback, that you consider us and either provide childcare and give us more notice when you need our input on such important matters. And that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson.
My name's Susan Donaldson. I am also a parent of a child at Annie Yates', and the PTO Vice President. I'm very tired because I was at the Harvest Festival all day, and I did not get a... I only heard about the meeting through various... John forwarded me something. I did not get... Automatically get an email. I got a robocall today while I was at the festival. So I would support Ames there saying that really some more lead time and also some calendar synchronizing could happen, perhaps, to make sure that on a night such as this, that we make sure there's no conflicts, potential conflicts. I also wanted to support Ames that I am in favor of an International Family Day. I feel like our school has a representation of all kinds, a giant spectrum of family configurations, and that it would be fantastic for all of those children to feel like their particular family is recognized. I also recently sent... Have had a couple of email exchanges with Juliet Dunn about the nutrition at the school. There's been... There hasn't been a menu in a while. There's been some... Something happening about why there isn't a menu provided for us. I'm not sure why not. And the... I was troubled by the breakfast selection. We have only... I'm only mentioning breakfast because that's all I saw. Lunch looked okay, but breakfast was shockingly terrible with a 22-gram sugar bar, for example. So I'm hoping... She mentioned that there are some other options that she was considering, and I asked her to... That's great. Please let me know when you're going to start offering more appropriate food, and she hasn't gotten back to me yet. So I also feel like this is an issue that the board should support, that our kids need to be eating nutritious food. That would be the end of my comments.
All right. Did you have a question?
No, I had a comment. I just wanted to say my son made it to the Harvest Festival and had a great time, and I want to thank you for that.
So I would like to also add my name to the previous two speakers who complained about the having this meeting... Sounds like this meeting regarding the possible closure of Annie Yates' here tonight, and to have it with so little notice, and on the Harvest Festival evening is not exactly very... Being very transparent, but that's what I want to talk about right here, right now, is something different. About a month and a half ago, I was dropping my daughter off at Annie Yates' in the morning, and the Assistant Principal there, Mr. La Bas, took me aside and told me that there's a meeting that's getting ready to happen here at the Ralph Hawley site, and it's about... This meeting was... He told me it was going to be about racial issues in the school district, and that I might be interested in it. And the way he described it, it did sound interesting. And I asked him, "When exactly is this meeting happening?", and he said it's happening at nine o'clock. So this was 8:30, so I thought, "Okay, I'll show up at work a little late, and so I'll go to this meeting. Sounds interesting." But I went to the meeting, got there first, before anybody else, and then the people started coming in, including the speaker that was presenting, making his presentation, the entries, myself, and then Mr. Rubio came in, and he was really upset and agitated, and he said, "I'm not allowed to be there, and I have to leave immediately. It's a closed meeting." And he was extremely agitated, very hostile and aggressive. And so I left, because he told me it was a closed meeting, so, okay, I didn't understand that. I thought it was an open meeting. Fine, so I left. Then Mr. Rubio, the superintendent, sent a letter to the five of you, telling you that I had gone to this meeting, and I was... By going to this closed meeting, I was acting in a hostile and aggressive manner. He failed to mention that the Assistant Principal, Mr. La Bas, had invited me to the meeting over at Annie Yates'. Mr. Rubio failed to mention that to you. So I'm bringing this up now to tell you the real story of what happened, and that I'm going to be writing a letter of complaint to the Superintendent of the Schools of Elamita County complaining about this, because I... That's really shabby. It's a shabby way to treat parents here at the district. And I understand that Mr. Rubio is not happy because I've been a critic of his... Of the way he performs his duties here. I haven't been very supportive, because I disagree with a lot of the things he's done here at the district. So I've been a critic, and I understand it's not... Doesn't feel good to have people criticize your job, but, you know, that's essentially what Mr. Rubio is doing, is bullying. And it's ironic, because here tonight, you're going to be talking about this bullying thing on the agenda, and what you're defining bullying as...
You're out of time.
Is when somebody engages in intimidating others, and I believe that's what the superintendent was doing to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Any other public comments? Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Juniper Bauch. I'm also a parent for a child at Anna Yates', and I have just one comment, and it's about PE for my daughter at Anna Yates'. She's in second grade, and it's come to my attention that since the last PE teacher was let go, there is no PE teacher available for them for K through, I guess, fourth, fifth? I'm not quite sure. Third, fourth, or fifth? Anyhow, she has no PE right now, so I'm kind of curious about that. And I guess it has to do with the fact that the other PE teacher was let go, and you hired a new PE teacher, but she's only available... Or he's only available for middle school. And I'm kind of like confused about that, because I really would love her to have PE. So if there's something that you guys can do about that, that would be awesome.
Tell me again what grade level your daughter's in?
She's in second grade, and I think the new PE teacher, he only does middle school, so all of kindergarten through, yeah, I'm not sure, third, fourth, have no PE teacher right now. So I guess the teachers themselves are supposed to get a time slot where they go out and do PE with the kids, but for my, you know, second grade teacher, Ms. Perez, she did not seem too enthusiastic about that. And also, there seems to be no time slots available, because the PE teacher is doing all of... Taking over the yard for his middle school class, so there's no time slots available for them to go out to the yard, and there's no teacher, which is strange. I had hoped that we could change something.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just going to say that I'm... Well, I'll make sure we look into it, find out what's going on. You're correct, teachers at K five, K three at least, are supposed to be doing PE themselves.
Yeah, well, you know, I mean, there's like... She's, you know, not the most fittest, like, person to be out there doing PE with.
I'll go ahead and look into it for you.
Yeah, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments on items not on the agenda tonight? Okay. Oh. You're not typically supposed to. Did Ms. Tamery, did Ms. Donaldson have any time left in her?
No.
She took all her time? You can send me an email. You can send Donaldson an email. Okay, reports? Do we have an ETA report? A CSEA? Do we have a superintendent's report?
Yes, good evening, everyone. I just want to report out on a few things. One, I'd like to share with those watching in the community and the board that about a week ago, I was invited to an event put on by the San Francisco Business Times, and it was a STEM breakfast, looking at the... What science, technology, and math engineering looked like in the Bay Area. And I was delighted that... Felt fortunate that Wareham had a table there, and had a number of people from the universities and educators from both San Francisco and the East Bay. And so that was an event we attended about a week ago, and one of the speakers from Cal State University, East Bay, Stephanie... Dr. Stephanie Couch was speaking of some of the new partnerships that are being established in Emory Unified in terms of science for our students. We have a lot of great things happening at Annie Yates' in terms of science for the kids, and we're going to be expanding those. So I just want to report out to everybody that I attended that event. I want to report back to the school board on an item that came up at the last meeting. I, per your direction, met with the basketball team at the high school and explained to them the current situation regarding... It's a little bit of detail PG and ease refusal to come in and do a little bit of work until a certain customized fabricated item and work is complete in mid-November. And I did let them know that I believe that they could be in the gym practicing in the new gym at the ECL facility by December 23rd. So that is what we're... Swinton is pushing Turner Construction on to try to make sure that date stays intact, but I wanted to follow up with you and let you know that I met with the school board as you asked me to do. Excuse me. Basketball. Oh, I... School board, I'm sorry. School board basketball, sorry. Team, sorry. And last thing I just would report on to the board is that I'll be at Yale University with one of our teachers tomorrow, Mr. Miles Green from the high school. We have a great partnership with Yale, and if the public and audience don't know this, we've had teachers over the years who go to Yale for two or three weeks during the summer. They... Yale University has afforded and allowed some of their professors to have a lower teaching course load, so they can actually work with educators and our teachers and a few other districts across the country to really study and hone in and develop art-infused academic work and projects. And so Mr. Miles Green and I will be there over the next few days with other districts around the country, and with, for the first time, about 20 other university presidents, because while Yale has been funding all this for years, they are also looking to expand and grow the program. So that's my report for tonight.
Great, thank you, Superintendent. For my president's report, I also wanted to call attention to the wonderful Harvest Festival that happened today. I attended the festival with my son, who is duly outfitted as an important Star Wars character, and really, it was one of the best organized festivals of recent years, and I'm not just saying that the principal said that, the other, you know, teachers who've been here for a long time. So I know there was a lot of energy and volunteerism and thought that went ahead of time, and Ms. Donaldson and Ms. Mack, in particular, as our PTO leaders, put that together, and it was really, I thought, a great event. The kids enjoyed it, and it seemed like people were raising money. And I have to give a special call out to Ms. Miles and Mr. Rogers, who sacrificed themselves at the dunk tank to repeated dunkings by the students. I wasn't asked, fortunately. You know, you really would have made money. Five bucks. Five bucks for President dunking. Maybe next year. Maybe next year. But I didn't have the temerity to send Dylan up against Ms. Miles, but he did go up against Mr. Rogers and hit it on the first try. Mr. Rogers was a very good sport. So thank you again. Okay, I think that takes us to our study session. Superintendent?
Great, thank you. Good evening again, everybody. I'm going to lead you through. I apologize for the staple being on the wrong corner of your packet, so if you grab a packet, please flip it over. It should start with the title, "Emory Unified Study Session." And I just want to just touch base with everybody on the purpose of our study session, which is really for us to work together as a school board and community to explore issues together and to gain additional information. Tonight's study session is an outcome and follow-up from a promise made by School Board President John Affeld that we would take a closer look at our facilities in regards to Annie Yates', as well as our new site being constructed on San Pablo Avenue, our joint city and school district project, the new Emoryville Center for Community Life, which we also call ECL. I'm going to just take a moment to tell you the flow of the study session. I would like to... I picked some items that I think are the... Based on conversations from the April or May meeting that parents brought up, and I think these are the most pertinent issues, and certainly, if they're... If we haven't hit them all, you're certainly welcome to let us know in public comment. But I'd like to start off with safety, primarily first regarding access to the grounds and also in regards to our students. I'd like to move from there to talk about space. I'd like to talk about one of the tasks for staff was to take a stronger, more detailed dive into the fiscal ups and downs of different scenarios, and then show... Share with everybody some of the comments from parents from this week, and then public comments. So I'd like to first bring up this evening Mr. Mark Sibberlich. Mr. Sibberlich has been our lead architect and designer from DSK Architects, and I've asked Mr. Sibberlich to be here to make sure all of us, including our newer board members, myself as a newer superintendent, are well-informed, and the community, on the issues of safety first, and then space also. Mr. Sibberlich, in your presentation, you could probably go ahead and diminish that or hit escape, maybe. You may need to hit escape, sorry. And just, you might need a hand. And it should be diminished there at the bottom. You see the PDF document down at the bottom? Just... There you go.
How do I scroll from page to page on this?
Probably page down, I think.
It's the arrow, it's the scroll arrow at the bottom.
And you may need to move the mic closer to your... To when you're talking. Thank you.
And then... Do you see the cursor as I move the cursor around on the screen?
I can.
That'll just help a little bit. Yes, thank you. Mark Sibberlich, I'm with DSK Architects. I'm one of the Nexus architects that are designing and did the working drawings for the project. And I will try and be brief and then answer questions on the board on the project. I don't know how long it's been since you've seen... Been looking at the drawings. I did a presentation at the City Schools several months ago, and actually... Excuse me. And actually, we'll be doing another one next, I think, next week as well. So real quickly, just to orient you then, this is San Pablo Avenue here. Forty-seventh is along here, 53rd up here. Just the flow of the site, the drop-off is here, the K eight students enter off of this side. The high school enter from the lower side here. The gymnasium is here. It enters anywhere along these doors here, and then for the community use, which is their tan, they enter here. Let me sort of march around here quickly. So the community center is here on the corner. The tan spaces are the primarily community service-owned operated facilities, and then everything else is operated primarily by the school. The blue being the district administration, this being the high school, this building being the K eight building, this is the school's multi-use building, the gymnasium, as I mentioned before, and then these are the field areas here. And this is... This has... Comes under kind of two names. It's been referred to as the community commons throughout the design process, but it's actually the isolated K five activity area. And now I'm going to jump from this to, I think, the subject of this meeting, which is this zoning of the site. And we can go back and forth with questions, but the red line is the security perimeter for the entire site. And so, you know, late at evening or before anything happens in the morning, that's the line that has fencing or building or something that protects the site at all times. The blue line, this line here, is the line that identifies the controlled access for adults when that... When school is in operation. So an adult can get into the community center through here into this plaza and enter the community center here, or into the admin area here, and get to the district administration as well, or through controlled doors here, they can get into the library. So that's an edge that the typical adult can't get across that without some sort of control, sign in, some of the... Some sort of monitoring. Then the green line is this line here is another secure line for the K five play area. So once... When school is in session, that area is... Has gates and fences and secure building. It has an edge to it, so students can't move in and out of that without some sort of control. The big part of the field is zoned by more architectural sort of features. There's an edge here that defines the field area from this area of activity, and then there are berms here that separate this area from this area of activity here. The general idea that as the design was completed is K five would play here. This could handle in different sort of organizational ways, high school in this area, middle school here, and different age groups up in this area, and then the fields were just available on any sort of operational opportunity. I do think one of the things that we may have not been clear enough about the understanding that this field is available all day. It has lines on it that make it look like a football field or a baseball field, but it's only used for those activities after school. So during the school day, any age group under any control has access to the entire field for whatever use the school deems appropriate. The... A line that actually isn't shown here that I meant to... This is actually public area here, and that access is controlled through here, and so if an adult is using the pool in this area here, they can't get into the gym without passing through some secure doors. One other space allocation thing to be aware of is there's the community multi-use here, which again, primarily is under their... Under their operation. The multi-use building is about a forty... What, a 4,300 square foot facility, and it's divisible into two at any time, and the idea is that it's for different times of day. You can have the different age groups and the two different sides, or you can open it up. Might compare that. That's 4,300. The Annie Yates multi-use, I think, is right around 1,500 square feet. So it's more than... More than... It's towards triple the size. And then the gym itself actually is divisible as well. There's a partition that runs down the middle of it, so the gym itself can be divided into two gyms at any time as well. You would do that for recreational... You would do that for recreational reasons, the competitive, the competitive court would take up the entire gym. So, that's kind of a brief kind of overview of things. Maybe just to recap on, on what these numbers mean. One, that's the K, that's the K-8 entry area. Two, that's the secure community plaza area. Three, that's the library plaza area. And again, both of these are separated from the school by fences and gates. Depending on operational issues, you can actually, you have a choices. You can open them up or close them down, depending on what's happening. The K-5 is secure, that's the community commons or the K-5 play area. Pool area is, of course, over here, fields, and I denom three, the three areas for, and then this is parking, parking here, and actually, the parking extends over to here. And there is parking along this side when the drop-off isn't, isn't active. So, that's my sort of brief overview of all of this, and I'd be glad to go back to the site plan or spend more time on any of this. I realize this is, this can be very complex because you haven't spent all the time looking at it, but I have. So, let me turn it back to you all.
Well, let me just ask a few questions. Go back to the prior slide with the security areas. Yeah. So, point out what the separation is between the high school and the K-8, and explain how that is supposed to be controlled?
There's, between, there's the seven A, seven B, seven C areas. There are, there are berms. There is no fence here. You can, you can walk through here, and so it's a, a landscaping separation that zones this area from this area, and similarly, from this area to this area. This area across here is at a different grade level, it's up about four feet, and so there's some, some railing type of fencing that separate this from the rest of it. So, these, although they're not fenced, you can, you can get from one to the other, they have zones that identify them as different areas.
I, I was more focused on the high school building itself.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And the K-5 common area, the K-8 building. It's my understanding that, that there's not supposed to be free flow between those, those points.
You can't get from the high school to the, to the K-8 school without passing through some sort of a security, some sort of a fence, some sort of a gate, some sort of a door.
And where are those?
There, the lobby for the high school is here, so you have to enter this lobby and then go into the commons area here. And then, once you were into the commons area or the K-5 area, then you can enter through the doors to a classroom, or go all the way back out around to the main entrance, which is on this side. Or you could go through gates here, walk all the way around to the entrance on the other side.
And if I would just add for clarification, right now, at our current campus, we, our K-8 students are on one campus, but in our plans here, the K-5 is actually separated from the six eight.
Yeah.
Even, even for the restrooms.
Yes, yes.
So, how is that displayed on the diagram there?
Well, because the, this K, this is the K-5 area here, and so this would be the, as a play area. And so, the upper grades.
I mean, the K-5, I thought was floors one and two.
Yeah.
And six eight is floor three.
The others are on the upper floors. And they're zoned, the different sides of the building are even zoned differently. So, that the first floor is all K, K-1, K-2, second floor is K-2, K-3, and then four, five. And see, four begins at the third floor on one side, and then gets up to eight at the top floor. So, it steps as you go up the building. It's zoned by different age groups.
But it, it was my, I don't think it's the case, is it, that if, that an eighth grader could walk, would have to go through gates or barriers to, to walk past a fourth grade classroom?
There are systems in place that they had, you'd have to go down through a stair and enter, leave your zone and enter that other zone. And so, you have, you have a doorway to the stairway, or you have a system on the elevator that isolates one zone from the other. And so, that's, that's how you would identify that.
And when you move from one zone to another, are, are you saying there are ways to electronically, you know, turn something on or off that you can't?
No, they are not. No, we had talked about doing electronic.
You're saying there's a door there?
There's a door.
But you can go through the door?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. It's, so, that's the, okay. But between the high school and the K-5 area?
Yeah, you actually, you have to leave, you have to leave this building and go out into the, into the high school lobby, and then from there, move through a gate.
And could that gate be turned down, or you give a key card to a teacher or something?
It could be, yes.
Yeah.
And I mean, any, any of the doors could be, if you wanted to add more, you know, electronic devices on, on the various disorder.
What's, what's the current plan? I, I thought that there was a, a plan to, to, you know, that one could not voluntarily push a door and go from the high school out into the K-5 area, because there would be some kind of electronic.
No, we don't, no, we don't.
Or other law. No, it's not the current.
No, someone could do that. Yeah, that relies on some, some operational management to prevent that. The door itself is not, and actually, even if it had, we, even if it did have an electronic device, that wouldn't prevent the activity. It might monitor it, but it wouldn't prevent it, because they're all exit doors, so they, they have to be able to open it in time.
So, it's a.
So, if we added the electronics, you'd, you'd get a monitoring device. I, I think part of understanding how this would work is, is that there, there are staff around, there are people monitoring everything, you know, YF's teachers and other, other faculty around all the time. So, it's not, it's not like a site during the school day in which you're likely to have anybody moving around that's not observed.
So, programmatically, it would need to be clear to students and staff, right, which areas are for which students? That, that is the area planned out to be for K-5 students, so that if an upper grade student is seen trying to enter that area, they would be?
I think one of the things that are balanced in this, this important discussion is, is that we can define very specifically from a design perspective, go, this is a, this is a K-1, this is a two, three, three, four, on up. But a lot of those things are flexible based on some operational issues that happen over time, like how many kids do you have at each age group? And so, you're gonna be moving age groups around a little bit, and so you don't wanna sort of overdefine this as an edge and divide, you know, hardware that defines an edge that you really don't wanna have. And so, within the building, I guess, like any kind of a big operation, you do have the opportunity for misbehavior, but want to anticipate with a certain amount of operational guidance that that will not happen. Certainly, a lot more definable here than it is at Annie Yates, which is, every door is open to the courtyard and.
Right, but it's a single grade over there.
In fact, they're, they're kind of forced into the same, the same spaces on Annie Yates.
The, the K-5 play area, you said that, that no other children could enter that?
Without, without going through some sort of a gate or a door.
I get, but, but, okay.
Yeah.
And then that gets to the operational issues that you were just talking about.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
From this diagram, the area labeled as number five, the perimeter green band or border or boundary with those gates or access points, those are all exiting outs, out or away from that space, correct? The means of egress or the direction of egress is out. So, you could control all your gates through panic hardware and lockable on the outside. So, you couldn't access it through a latch, or that latch would be locked, only activated by panic hardware on, from the inside?
That's not entirely true. The, the, these, these classrooms at this level here can.
I'm, I'm.
Trying to recall the actual exiting path in, in the area. And it's, and certainly, the, the multi-use exits through this space.
You can go to the dorm room.
And then through, out through here. And some of these classrooms, even though they're kindergarten classrooms, might have an occupant load that's big enough that they need two exits, and so one would go into the corridor, and then out this way.
But you're, you're still dealing with the, the K through eight population in the K-8 building?
Yeah.
That could exit into the courtyard, the number five.
Yes, yes.
But from there, you're still in that age group that's prevalent at Annie Yates?
Yes.
So, once you get into the courtyard of number five, your exit from there would be in the direction outward.
Yes.
You wouldn't, so you could control those points of access through your, through your hardware, your panic hardware.
Right.
And that way, you couldn't gain access unless it were unlocked from the outside.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right. All of these, any of these gates that are on, on this fence line here and this fence line there, that, they're definitely exit hardware that open out, and you can't, you can't get in.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's true, that's true with the system, the system of gates here, the system of gates here, and the gate that's here. Those are all designed for one way.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you can open them. I mean, the idea is that during non-school hours, this becomes much more open, and you can move much more freely. But during school hours, that's right.
And does that apply to the connection points between the K-8 and the high school? That you could only open them out?
Yes, that's right. This, these gates, I'd actually have to check the swing on these gates, but the exiting path for this building, actually, this exits into the courtyard and then out. So, the high school does have its second exit. It has an exit here that goes out this way. Its second exit goes into the, goes into the courtyard.
And so, does that mean you can make it a panic exit, or?
Yeah, and we could alarm it, I suppose, if.
What if you just moved the fence away from the building and made it to egress to go to zone three from that exit?
Well, it's the, the, the library is here, and you wanna be able to, the, the, this age group wants to be able to get to the library without passing the secure zone. Yeah, I mean, the, I mean, there are a couple kinds of situations to be thinking about is, one is the emergency. Of course, if you had an emergency, you're evacuating the site, and so that's, that's one scenario. The other is, do you just have a, you have a student that, that is trying to get from one area to another when he should, when he should not be doing that? And I think at the end of the day, a lot of that has to do with training and some operational things to think about.
Speaking of your areas of refuse, or refuse.
Refugees.
Where are they, or where do they occur on the site?
Here, the, the whole field areas.
So, you vacate to the, to the field areas?
Yeah, so you can, you can pretty much move most of this entire building and, and all of this, everything else into the, into the field without letting them go anywhere else.
You're still on site, but away from the building?
Yeah, yeah.
So, if I understand the diagrams correctly, my first thought is, we have 500-plus kids coming in through one gate up on the north end of the campus. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, and that's a K through eight, which will make a nice orderly egress. So, they come in, and now they're walking through, what I'm gonna call for number five is the exercise yard, all the way down to where four is for breakfast in the morning. Would that be accurate, because that's where the cafeteria is?
You could do that, you could do it that way, or you could bring them down this side and have them cross over here. You could do it either way, but that's correct.
But either way, they're ending up basically where, to the right of four.
Well, no, they could, no, you, you could come down by seven B and come in this side.
So, that's the cafeteria there?
Yeah, but, well, yeah, the whole, this is a cafeteria for all of the age groups. This, this can be divided into two. And so, if you wanna put the K-5 here and the six twelve here, you can do that.
But four is not the cafeteria. Four is the high school.
Four is the high school, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I got that wrong.
Four is just the entry for the high school.
Got it. So, we have kids coming in from four and from seven B to go into the breakfast hall. Okay, so now, let, go ahead.
Yeah, let me just, there, there are many ways you can do this, but the, the likely route would be, you would bring the K-5 in here, the K-5 would go in this side here, and the high school and the, and the upper, and the, sort of the middle school would come in from this side here. So, they're not mixing. You can do it a lot of different ways, but that's a, a way to think about it.
Right. Now, in the high school, that's where the principal's office would be as well?
Yeah.
And then there's a counseling office in there?
Yes.
Okay. And so, those services, and the nurse has a facility in the high school?
The, the nurse is up in the, in the, the health center, which is on the second floor of the admin building here.
Okay, so how does a high school student get from the high school to the health center?
There's a, an upper deck walkway that's, if you're in the high school on the second floor, there's an, oh, there's a deck up here, and there's a walkway that goes from that deck over into the entrance to the health center. So, you actually never touch the area with the, with the lower school while you do that. It, it works pretty well in that you've got an, you have an access into the, the health center for the high school students that's separate from access by either the lower school or the, or adults who may be using the health center as well. They would come in from this side, and then go up, and then enter from the, in another direction.
Okay. And so, there's been a lot of talk about the increased amount of play space. Can you explain to me how five constitutes a play space? What is there for kids to play on or with? Is there a field there?
This is, this is a field. These are, these are, this is not a play structure, but it's the things from which kids can attach things to and sort of do their own sort of creative play. There is some play, large play devices that the kids can drag out and move and sort of build their own structures in this space as well.
Okay, I, I didn't follow that.
Well, yeah.
Can you define something they can attach to?
It's pole with hooks, things that you can put a cable on, do different things, some sort of, of the guided building, if you will.
I remember that, that's probably one you should see the presentation for specifically.
Poles, okay. Okay, and so that's it? There's no climbing structures, no play structures?
No.
None of that stuff?
No, no.
What's up by the one up top there?
Yeah, this is a play structure up here.
Okay. And how would a student have access to both of those during recess?
If you were gonna bring the lower room here, you, you would do it under supervision, because it's open to the rest of the campus.
We'd bring them to one, oh, under supervision? So, we'd have to choose between five and one?
Well, it depends on, no, I don't know you'd have to choose that, I, I don't know how you'd want, you have some choices on how you might wanna manage the split between the two at different times of the day.
Where would the kinder play?
Well, here again, depending on how you were gonna structure things, you probably would group them here, and they would play here. This would probably likely get used under sort of specific times or just after school or before school.
So, the playground would be just for before and after school?
The play structure. Well, I, again, it depends on how you would like to use it.
I see.
There's no, the design doesn't restrict it. The, the logistics you're talking about are true.
But staffing does.
Yeah, yes, yes.
So, really, what I'm hearing is we're gonna need a lot of dorm room and a lot more yard duty. Is that accurate?
No, I would not say that, but.
Okay. But to get through any of those gates and things, right, okay. So, how much square footage is five?
It's about 20,000 square feet, I believe.
And that compares, what, I, I, 22,000 square feet to acres is?
Half an acre.
Half an acre. So, we're going from two acres at Annie Yates to half an acre here.
Well, if you just wanna compare those and ignore the, the whole middle school activity and the ability to use the entire site, yes.
I don't wanna ignore it, I just think that it's a matter of supervision, right? If you have the K through three playing on five without, with poles, and then you have the six, seven, and eight playing on seven, right, you're gonna need supervision. It doesn't, it doesn't alleviate the need for supervision, I guess, is my, my concern, is it makes it very difficult. So, we can't talk about it as a totality when really you can only use one at a time with any group of kids. They can't play, it's not contiguous, so you can't, you know, at Annie Yates, it's a nice big L. And so, you know, that's been the, that's been the argument of, when you add up all those spaces, it's a lot of play space, but sightlines don't allow it to be used without significantly more staffing. And so, I think that's a.
Yeah, I won't, I, I can't all address all of the operational issues except for, I, I would add is that you're, you're, you, you do have a co-located site, so you have more, you have more staff. so you have more, you have more staff on the site as well. So, you're not quite separating the age groups necessarily the way that you might do it now.
Well, I mean, again, you know, if you look at the scheduling, between breakfast and lunch, that's a lot of kids to move through one cafeteria. And then, while you're doing that, you have all the different grades to get out. I mean, I don't know if you've, and I guess I'm not talking to you, I'm really talking to the audience, I guess, is, you know, the lunch dance that we do now with eight grades on one site, and, you know, we're starting lunch at almost, well, I have it exactly. I looked it up. You know, we start lunch at 11:00 AM and don't finish until almost 12:30, just to get all those grades through. Whereas here, we have to add in yet another grade. No, it's even longer than that? Yeah. 10:30 to 1:30, okay, I was off by a little. Yeah, sorry.
Again, here, operational issues are not my forte.
No.
But there are, but you do have a much bigger multi-use building and you can break it. And so, how you want to, how you want to serve, you know, one or two or three, that, you have that ability here.
I guess for me, the idea is we want to save money on staffing by co-locating. And as soon as you co-locate, it sounds like a good idea, but once you co-locate, you realize you have to divide. And once you divide, you require more staffing. And so, it's the sort of catch-22 of, and that's sort of been my argument, is that you don't save money by having more kids on one site, because there's no one to cut. You eventually need to bring someone in to supervise kids when they're on either sides of the partition, or you end up doing lunch from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM to accommodate everybody, so.
I'm not sure that's correct. I think that, Mr. Pats, if you have students, right now, the schedule runs so that, let's say, K one is out, people are supervising K one, two, three is out, people supervise them, four, five is out. When the six, seven, and eight come out for lunch, those students are still being supervised. So, it might mean in this situation, they would, the supervising and those children would move to another section of the area. But I'm not sure that you're correct on this one.
Okay. So, feel free to explain it to me. You know, I'd love to see a schedule of lunches and things.
I mean, I guess, yeah, I'm, you've got so many adults per kids. And whether there's lots, you need a certain number of adults per kids...
That's my point.
...to supervise Anna Yates now.
Yep.
And if those kids are, some of them are over there and some are over here, and the grades are broken up, you've got some adults over there and you've got some adults over here. So, I, it doesn't necessarily follow. I'm not following how you are adding adults to that scenario.
I'm not adding adults. I'm just not subtracting them.
Yeah.
Right, there's, if you want to phrase it as moving them, I think that's great. We move them. We just don't gain any savings. We're still stuck with the same number of adults.
But they have more space if you've got that whole field that people have access to.
They don't have more space. That's the whole thing. They go from two acres to less than half an acre. That's not more space.
I just want to point out regarding, since we're talking about this issue, for clarification, I hope it helps the board and the community. That area, I think, Mr. Cyber, like you said, is about 23,000 square feet. The square footage of Anna Yates, the green turf, that's not doing so well right now, but the green turf area and the asphalt area, the basketball courts in that center area add up to about 19,000 or 20,000 square feet. If you add in the K area, you'd get another 4,000 square feet. So, they're pretty close in terms of square footage, just looking at that, that K five area.
Do we have other questions from the board on this part of the presentation?
Just, just an observation, and I don't know if this would cause more harm or good, but what if there was a fence between the actual athletic field and the play area for the K through three grades for the play, where the play structure is at? And that becomes, I mean, that is actually dedicated for that play area rather than having it filter out on the player, although you could have access between the two. But that is actually a barrier between the play field and the play structure.
You could do that. It's actually, it is fenced with the exception of the opening here. And so, you could add...
I'm just saying, take it out to the entire line of where the turf ends along there, down to where a pinch point, yeah, the nearest point between the two.
There's a, I mean, we could add a, there's a ramp that goes from this level down to here. This is about four feet higher than this area here. And so, a gate can be provided here. And so, and there's a railing on the top of here, so that you can add that sort of, you can add another door here, if you will, that helps define this area from this area. That could be done, yeah. The, this end is a little, I mean, this is, we don't have gates along the backside here. And so, if you're really trying to secure this area, then you have to think about how to add more fencing down here to separate this area from down here. I mean, these are, these are possibilities. It might be good as the, as the site becomes more, more real and we walk around the site to help look at these. It's hard to look at these drawings and understand some of the geography of the site. And I know you're just beginning to think about, oh, how are we actually going to use this? A lot of these really good questions about the different age groups in different places. And a lot of operational questions are going to be, are going to come up as you really sort of think about what age, you know, how many students do I have when I move in and where are they actually going to be at what level? And what decision do I want to make about how I start up the plan, if you will? So, but there are options about adding different levels of security if it turns out that you think you need that. My hope is, is that the reverse happens, that the comfort level, once you occupy the site, that you realize that some of this, some of these gates are actually in the way.
Did you have more to talk about on space?
No, no. Unless you have other questions, I'd be glad to talk.
I mean, there is a comparison chart in the materials, comparison slide of...
Yeah, that comes from, it's interesting when I was getting, talking to...
Mr. Cyber, like, I'm sorry, that also, by the way, if you go back to the PowerPoint, Mr. Cyber, like, you'll see it there on your computer if you like. It's down there diminished on the PowerPoint, right to your right, no, to your right, all the way to your right. And if you flip down the next page, or you could click left, click on the left side. On your left, go ahead and click on that green.
On my other one.
Sorry. One more down.
Otherwise.
There you go. That's the one.
Yeah, this is an excerpt. It was when, November of, when was that? I wrote that down, because it was, yeah, back in 2012. It's interesting. Everything that we just talked about on the site plan that I showed you shows up in this same presentation that was done back then to the board about the organization of the site. So, nothing that we're looking at today is new from what was a part of that presentation back then. And anyway, this was, this was an excerpt that isolated, and we did some comparisons between several different schools. And then, what are highlighted here is the ECL site and the Anna Yates site. And but the ones, the highlighted, you know, the two areas, 103 site density versus 175 and the 197 versus 400. And that basically just speaks to the whole idea of how much air, more air you have to use that you can use in many different ways versus what you've got at Anna Yates right now.
Okay, any questions on this?
John, did you have anything else on this one?
No, I don't think so. I just wanted to make sure that was available for the board and for the public to take a look at. And if you have any questions, I have some other numbers if you want.
Okay.
If not, I'll move us to the next slide.
Yeah.
Oh. Yeah, he may not know which, he won't know which button. Oh, yeah?
Is that what you want?
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to you. Thank you. It's a pleasure being here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cyber.
Thank you, Mr. Cyber.
Okay, I'd like to bring everyone's attention to the blue, yellow, and green Excel chart in your packets. They're up on the screen. Staff was asked to take a lot of time, overtime, to do our best estimating of what different scenarios could mean for us. And so, what you will see is that, and I'll walk you through each of these. For the possibility that Anna Yates would remain a TK three, there would be a minimum of 13, approximately 13 classrooms needed. There would likely be actually about 18 used. We have some teachers who don't really have, and some staff who don't have full classrooms available right now, like the music teacher who has to walk, work off the stage, which is difficult. The PE teacher doesn't really have his own classroom. He works, you know, he works basically outside. We have some special ed staff. So, we would probably end up actually using approximately, our best estimate is about 18 classrooms. That would leave about, that would leave nine classrooms open. And if we're using current numbers, that would be about 260 students at Anna Yates and 432, again, using current numbers at the ECL site. That would require some things, we believe, and we've taken a lot of time to give this a lot of thought with staff. We would believe we would probably need to make the assistant principal a principal and have a principal at the site. We would have to add some staff in the kitchen and some yard duty staff, because lunch and yard duty, if it were occurring, so occurring still at Anna Yates, would be occurring at the same time approximately at the ECL campus. So, it's not a situation where, sometimes I, when I first started looking at this, I thought, oh, we'll just send a staff back and forth. But it's probably, it's not really going to work when recesses and lunches are occurring at the same time. So, we've made our best estimates of what the potential implications are, including probably being shorthanded on some supervision before and after school more than we are possibly now. We also have made an estimate based on last year's expenses for water, gas, and electric. We decreased that, those amounts, but we did make an estimate based on the number of classrooms and students. Doris Sue, our fiscal director, made these estimates for us. The county office of education told us about a week or two ago that it would be about 25,000 to keep the site lit in terms of internet. And so, in that model, we believe we would be looking at additional costs for the district of about $130,000. In the TK five model, it got, our estimates became a little worse. We're having about the same students, maybe 380, 311 at each site, actually has a bigger impact at both sites. It would impact the office. So, for example, in the first scenario, if we have 260 staff there, we probably, you know, we might not need as much staff, but the problem for us is having, really having 380, almost 400 students, it's probably going to impact us and require two office staff there, close to what we, really what we have now, and two at ECL. Maybe one for the K eight and one at the high, excuse me, six, eight, and one at the, yes, six, eight, and the nine, 12 at the high school. So, we estimate having to add an office staff person, again, some similar kitchen staff and yard duty people. And that ended up being a more expensive model, as far as we can tell, approaching $200,000. The last scenario we have would be Anna Yates is wide open, 27 classrooms available, with the potential for, you know, other school districts and entities to potentially use the school and pay the district money, which we would estimate to be anywhere between $0 to $600,000 per year. So, I'm glad to take questions on this, but these are our best estimates, and we've gone through these about 20 times.
Where does, where's the yard duty?
Down near the bottom, you'll see there's, we tried to do this conservatively. We weren't trying to bump up the numbers here, but we are estimating two people, at least an hour each, if we can get two people, you know, to work an hour. Really, you know, the duration of the lunch schedule, for example, wouldn't go as long, because we wouldn't have as many grades. But we'd still need somebody outside and in the cafeteria with the students. We estimate for an hour, conservatively.
To the conversation we were having earlier, do you think it's possible there could be a need for additional yard duty staff at the full ECL site?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know where you were going. Would there be additional staff needed? Which scenario? I'm sorry.
The K-12 ECL. Or do you think, this seems to say you think that our existing yard duty staff is sufficient?
Well, I would say, yes. I would say this, but I want to qualify that. We're always in need of more yard duty staff. We never have enough yard duty staff. I know the administration has to keep a close watch to make sure teachers are showing up for the yard duty on time. So, you know, it's always helpful when we have... Oh, sorry. Sorry, thank you. So, that being said, so we're always, we're always hoping for as much, to try to afford as much yard duty as possible. But to answer your question, yes, I think we're, I believe right now that our current staffing that we have at the high school and Anna Yates combined would be able to handle the ECL site. And we have, I forgot to mention what Mr. Cyber was presenting, we've added, we have a much more comprehensive and safer camera surveillance network at the ECL site plant. So, we have a lot of blind spots right now at Anna Yates in terms of not being able to see some areas where students easily are playing or where things have happened. We had, we had a group of students once run across the playground, we could only catch part of the incident. So, but yes, we would have enough staff, I believe, for ECL.
So, you think it would, it would be roughly equivalent to the current situation, and maybe that's not sufficient, is what you're saying?
Yes, it would be, equivalently, we would have, it would be equivalent. That's correct.
All right. The other thing that I guess I'd like further thought on is the, I guess I want to, the wellness program and the, you know, we've got counselors, we've got interns, we've got lots of good outside agencies coming in that are providing us. Now, some of that, the other slide, lifelong medical, and those folks are going to be housed in the administration building. But I guess I'd like to see some analysis between the ECL site, do we have enough space to house all those people at ECL? And obviously, if we split between the two sites, we'd have, I would think, more options to house the social service wellness folks in between the two campuses.
Well, isn't it a question as well as delivery? I have no idea if this is on, the delivery model, I guess, too, in terms of where, I'm certain we have a lot of inefficiencies, because we have people in broken places now, right? So, is there, what is the benefit or the advantages of having everything on one site, I think would be helpful. I've been on this conversation for a really long time, but I think that would help to understand what the flow of things is intended to be. Even with, right, you know, how do you, do you staff this group here? I mean, I don't know. I mean, I haven't seen it in a long time, true enough, but I think that would be beneficial just in terms of the, whatever delivery model. We do not currently have lifelong medical as a, you know, a provider necessarily sitting in any location right now, but, you know, how would that impact? We're talking about asthma, or what is it, dental care? I mean, there's a whole lot of services that we anticipate receiving that's already kind of queued up, but what does that look like in having students in one, you know, will they not have access or would they?
Yeah, there's a lot, there'd be a lot more for us to figure out programmatically. And we're a little concerned on the schedule, we were realizing in the last couple of days, for also to cover the teachers who meet collaboratively three times a week. That schedule is not clean, where you can have K one meeting one day, two, three, maybe four, five, six, seven, eight. Teachers, our art, music, and library teachers have five to 10 minutes to change to another grade level and switch, and it is a very complicated schedule. And if the teachers are going to be afforded three times a week to meet, it is not, it's not, I don't know that, we're not, we couldn't finish that for tonight's meeting, but we're not sure programmatically that it's going to work in terms of allowing teachers to meet three times a week. It's great. We think it's great that they can meet. Contractually, we have to allow them to meet at least twice a week. We give them three meetings a week, and they're working with Millis College this year, looking at assessment data, looking at student work in that third meeting. But if we're, if we're not all in one site, we're going to have, we have a lot to figure out regarding that schedule, whether or not that's also going to require an additional art teacher, an additional music teacher, an additional librarian... art teacher, an additional music teacher, an additional librarian to cover those. And that's something we hadn't considered and thought about.
Because those art, music, librarian teachers offer the core teachers the prep time, the grade level collaboration time.
That's right. So you may have the art, music, library teacher right now at Annie Yates, meeting with, covering the three kindergarten classes, and then right after that, they jump to the fifth grade, ten minutes later, and then they jump back down to another grade, and then, then we have the middle school elective. So we have all these intricate pieces running that are very difficult in the master schedule, so it's something else we'd have to, we'd have to look at.
Correct me if I'm not mistaken, don't we have an art and music teacher at the high school as well? Yeah, so when you talk about sharing the art teacher with the K eight students, don't we have a nine twelve art teacher, and don't we have a nine twelve music teacher?
We do, but right now, the art, music, and library teachers support the K eight teachers in classrooms. Even our science, new science teacher, our resource teacher, Mr. Reynoso, teaches middle school Spanish. So what I'm referring to primarily is the K eight issue. If the, if that, if the campus, if the campuses are not together as a K eight anymore, we're going to, we believe we may have some additional problems.
So you can't share across seven, twelve, you can only share across K eight? That's where I'm confused. It seems to me that we have a significantly smaller cohort at the high school than we do at the elementary, and so sharing things like elective teachers in the schools that typically have electives, you know, middle and high schools where we see those, would make it much easier because we could now even share a math specialist at the middle school level with the high school level. So I'm confused if we're, if we really still think about it as in two chunks, that, you know, I think the needs of a seventh and eighth grader are different than the needs of a K one, whereas the needs of seventh, eighth grader are not significantly different than that of, say, a tenth or a twelfth grader.
I think you're correct, except for the fact that I'm not talking just about electives. I'm talking about covering all the K eight teachers with three core, or four core teachers who cover the prep periods on one site. So remember, the art, music, library, and the science resource teacher have a very tight schedule where they change grade levels from K eight all different days of the week. So what I'm, so you're right about electives only, but I guess what I'm, what I'm suggesting, and I'm just suggesting it, and that it requires more examination by us and staff, is that we may not be able to support the K eight teachers meeting three times a week. I don't know any school in the state that allows teachers of the elementary grades to meet three times a week, or affords it. So I'm just, all I'm suggesting to the board and the community tonight is that that may not be possible for us to continue, and we're going to have to examine that as well.
But it doesn't incur an additional cost?
It would incur, well, here's where it would. If the, if we're going to have six through eight teachers, or fourth through eighth grade teachers, still wanting to have coverage and meet, particularly fourth and fifth grade in the K three model, still want to have three days a week that they get to meet together in prep, that we, I don't know that the current ninth through twelfth art and music teacher can cover fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade coverage as well. So I guess the question for us is, having split campuses could cause us additional problems in the scheduling of the amount of coverage and meeting time we allow teachers.
So, okay, I'm going to move on because I, so why is it that when we split the school differently than it is now, the AP has to become a principal? I see that, but I guess right now, we have a K eight school, and that has two administrators to help cover that wide grade span. But when we, when you do it for the magic K twelve, all of a sudden, we can keep that as a VP, but if he, if we don't do that way, he has to become a principal? What principal would he be? Would he be the middle school principal?
I just want to be careful how far we go into this conversation because it could turn into a personal issue that we later have to discuss as the board in closed session, but.
So just talk about it in the abstract as a position.
In the abstract as a position.
Not related to any particular person.
Okay. In the abstract as a position, I think that the board and I would, we'd have to have further conversation about the needs of the school. I think having a K three elementary or TK three elementary with two hundred and sixty kids, and not having a school principal and students, third graders, some of our second and third graders I can think of, believing they no longer have a principal, but Mr. Labass is there, whoever's there is the assistant principal, that in my mind, as an educator, might not be good enough. So I just think it would require conversation.
I get that in the, in the first scenario, but I'm looking at the second scenario. And so you put that eighteen thousand dollars there, and so I guess my question to you is, again, we couldn't have a K, a K five principal and a six twelve principal?
We could, but that would mean the principal of the six twelve better have a lot of expertise at middle school and high school, and I don't know, I don't know too many people who have both of those.
So, I mean, again, I always go back to the fact that we have six administrators, and so we could keep that AP and they could be at that site to help bridge that gap of knowledge base, if you, if so needed. I just don't see the need to make them a principal. I think, to me, the question becomes, if they need to be a principal in that breakdown, why wouldn't they need to be a principal in any breakdown? I just, I don't understand, you know, if that's a knowledge base that we need, and I'm not going to argue with you on that, why is that expertise not needed when all of a sudden, we have a K six? You know, you can do K eight, but you can't do six twelve? I mean, that's the way the ed code breaks it down. But again, we can come back to that. Let's look at the next one, the office staff. So by, we currently run two sites, and you're saying we're currently understaffed?
I would tell you in general that our entire district office and the school sites, I'd say included, we are down to the bone marrow in terms of staff. I have made, as you do know well, layoffs last year, we have cut several hundred thousands worth of dollars. Our staff are really barely keeping up with everything that we do, and I'm not sure, you know, maybe I haven't done a good job of making sure the board is aware of this. So I would say that we are making it day by day, and if you were to ask Ms. Parham at Annie Yates or anybody else, they would let you know that pretty quickly.
So again, I'll go to my same question. If we're able to share office staff at K eight, where we have a sixth grade span, we can't share office staff when we have a sixth grade span from six to twelve, or even seven to twelve? I just find that a curious placeholder in there.
Well, let me clarify.
Please.
So currently, we have two staff members who work full-time in the Annie Yates office.
Okay.
We have one full-time person who works at the high school.
Certainly.
If the high school becomes a six twelve, excuse me, ECCL becomes a six twelve with three hundred and eleven students, it is not going to be sufficient in my mind, in my experience, to have one person still in the office. We're going to need to shift one of those Annie Yates people to the ECCL campus. That leaves one staff member for three hundred and eighty-one students at Annie Yates. So in my mind, unfortunately, yes, in this configuration where we have about, you know, three hundred and eleven, eighty, three hundred and twenty at each site, we're going to end up needing two office staff members realistically at both sites. That's my best guess.
So your tipping point is three hundred?
I don't have a tipping point, I'm just telling you, basically, I just cut these down based on these scenarios, and those are the current numbers.
Okay. So at two sixty, we wouldn't need it, but at three hundred, we would?
It's three eighty.
Well, it's three eleven.
No, it's two sixty in the K three model at Annie Yates.
Right.
And then, in the second scenario, Annie Yates jumps to three eighty-one. So what I'm suggesting is that Annie Yates would still require two people, and that instead of a hundred and seventy-five students at the high school, we would have three hundred and eleven, which in my mind, yes, would also require another person.
Right. But we have three bodies now, and we would have one side of two sixty and one side of four thirty. And so two sixty, you were implying, would require one person, and it's clear that that implication is that four thirty-two would require two. If we shift some kids around, the lower number there is three eleven, which could not be maintained with one person, you're saying it would need two people. So that's, that's what I'm saying. So that's why I'm going to go from two sixty to three eleven. Somewhere between those two numbers is the magic cutoff point where you need a second body. So, but again, we can hold that till later. I really like what you did with the kitchen staff and the yard duty, because I think that's critical. I think that's an area of weakness for the district at the moment. I would love to see, I think this is very conservative, but I'd love to see what you have scheduled for them, how it is that it works out this way. Because I know we're serving food currently at the high school, and we're serving food at the elementary school. And if we take the middle school kids off and shift them over to the high school side, again, we go from serving lunch from, you know, five grade span, which is a little bit more challenging, to now serving lunch to the same five grade span, where you're really only having to do two lunches. You can do a high school lunch and a middle school lunch. So I'd be curious to see how it is that we lose that staff coverage by shifting what is the extra time at Annie Yates to cover the middle school, and not just moving that over to the high school, where we're, again, already serving lunch to the high school students. So shift the extra time for the middle school lunch at Annie Yates to the high school. I don't know how that gets lost, so I'd love to see that schedule as well. Can't argue with the utility costs nor the internet. So, you know, to me, it's that big one, is that seventy-four thousand, and I think if we ask the parents in attendance tonight, the additional cost of running two sites is probably worthwhile. But I just wanted to go through these numbers and sort of get a sense of where they came from. And they seem to align, the last time we had this conversation, of two fifty, and not really, I struggle to see where that comes from. So I go back, I guess, no, I, we have to hire more people, we won't actually be laying anybody off, which is good.
Any other questions?
I was picking up on your grade level collaboration point, and I think that is something that I think is really important and something I regularly raise, and in fact, we've made it one of your goals for the current school year, to make sure that grade level collaboration is happening again at Annie Yates, and that that played, in my view, a very important role when we were doing it well in improving student achievement at Annie Yates, and that we seem to have slipped off of that some, but it's master, it's back on the master schedule, and the principals, the teachers are really going at it. So I think that's great, I think it's important. And I would like you to give that further thought and tell us how that might be impacted. And maybe it is, as Member Pat suggests, maybe there's some, yes, it might be true that you lose some flexibility if you split the K eight, and some of it goes over to ECCL, but maybe you gain some flexibility with some of those prep teachers if they're teaching more than just nine, nine twelve. Was it under, under the middle scenario, the six twelve, how were you thinking we would be delivering art and music and library?
Well, I guess the dilemma is, again, the problem is.
At both sides?
At both, yeah, the dilemma, that's the dilemma.
Would the middle school art teacher, I mean, would the, would you still have a K eight art teacher that was spending some time here and some time there, or would it be?
Theoretically, when I first thought of it, I thought that's what we would do, but I guess what I'm still suggesting is that I don't really think it's going to work because of the master schedule. I don't think the K eight art teacher will be able to go back and forth between the sites three times with five or ten minutes in between classes. And so I don't, I don't think it'll work if I'm answering your question.
So, well, yeah, I guess you'd have to look at, and I know it took months to do the master schedule, so I'm not asking you to mock up a brand-new master schedule, but you'd have to at least conceptually consider whether.
It's possible.
Yeah, and I guess the way to do it would be, can they make one transfer a day where they're, you know, teaching the K five and then teaching the six eight, and they're only really transferring once, and yes, it's a little more constricted.
And I can bring that to the board, yeah. I didn't get to complete that, like I said, I had hoped today, but yeah, I'd be glad to bring that and take a look at that.
And I'm happy, you know, as a lifelong educator and education administrator, I'm happy to help you with the schedule if you need it. I think master schedules are complicated, but they're not impossible, particularly when you have the high school on a block schedule. It really does free up a lot of time because it's a nice, you know, hour and forty-minute block. It really shouldn't be that challenging to lock those things together. But I do have another question. I noticed you included unused classrooms, and one of the challenges we have this year is sharing space with the rec program, and it becomes a real challenge. And in the spirit of being a community in full-service schools, the nice thing about having those empty classrooms is we could dedicate, you know, one of them at each site or two of them at each site to the rec department, who does service our kids on days where, you know, we have in services or professional development. I mean, I think, you know, I can't tell you the number of parents who've come up to me and were so happy that rec was able to scramble and get coverage on days that the schools closed. And so I think rec being able to leave stuff on the Annie Yates campus and on the ECCL campus is great. So as you look at this, and I, because I think it's important when we talk about services, we talk about all the services, I think it'd be great if you sort of included the value of rec being able to have permanent classrooms at both sites, you know, because teenagers, we want to have activities for them after school. And for all our working families, I think it's critical that we have after-school care, which is the rec department in this city, available. And I know they always struggle for space. They end up, you know, shuttling across from the rec center over and back, and I know they'll now have offices at the ECCL, so, but it might be nice for them to have classroom spaces, particularly on rainy days. And having been a classroom teacher, I know how difficult it is to put all your stuff away so somebody can use your classroom at night, or in the afternoon, or having to not be able to stay after school and work with kids. So I think that'd be something to be really useful to look at, because we are using all the classrooms otherwise.
Are there questions?
Yes. Just an observation on the spreadsheet here. It looks like you're kind of going back as far as filling in what would occupy Annie Yates, and I think that was the approach you took as far as since it's been vacated. Would the numbers change, just basically means it may be esoteric, but would the numbers change if you essentially started with Annie Yates as the starting point as far as filling out the spaces there, and then what would the ECCL take as far as your, your needs and wants for both sites?
I don't think so. No, and I think I understand your question, if I started with ECC.
Well, it seems like you're creating Annie Yates out of thin air as far as to fill those occupancies. And rather than going that route, start with what you have at Annie Yates, and then stripping away or splintering them off to go to ECCL, and go in that direction and see what your estimate would end up being.
How, would you clarify just a second, because I did use the current student numbers at Annie Yates.
No, I'm not talking about the numbers per se, it's along the lines of administration. You're saying that you'd have to come back to Annie Yates to provide an assistant principal at Annie Yates. What do you have now, starting with Annie Yates, and then moving into ACCL? What she would need there?
We could do that, but this is going to go back to what President Affeld asked me earlier. I don't believe that we're going to need any additional staff in terms of supervision and administration when we move, in fact, I really don't think we're going to need more when we move to ECCL. So the reason I did this, just in terms of, one of the reasons I did this was because of that, and because to do this kind of analysis, if I also include that, it's just, it's going to get more difficult and time-consuming. If the board wants me to, you know, keep doing this, I will. But the, I thought the most important thing I could do was, under the belief that I think is correct, that we wouldn't need additional staffing, what would the impact be of these models? That's the reason that I took that approach. So these are really just the estimated additional revenues or expenses.
I think maybe what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that it would flesh out some of the things that were still questions, as far as you furthered the analysis, taking that approach, you would probably ferret out those, these inadequacies regarding staff and where you put them, and how you'd fill that.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So if I populate ECCL entirely as a four twelve to six twelve and see what's left?
No, I'm saying, start with the, start with Annie Yates, populate that as you, if you have here, but what would it take to get to the ECCL then? Because it seems like you're going from ECCL, populating that, staffing it, and then going back to Annie Yates as if it were a new school.
Okay, okay.
Stay with, yeah.
All right, okay.
But it's something to think about.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm sorry, I realize I had one more question on this. I noticed in the bottom of keeping, of closing Annie Yates, I'm sorry, moving Annie Yates. I noticed in the bottom of keeping, of closing Annie Yates, I'm sorry, moving Annie Yates to the new site, I noticed at the bottom you have a, we could make anywhere from zero to six hundred thousand dollars in revenue. What would it cost us to get Anna Yates ready, you know, to start renting out to other schools?
I don't, I don't know that it would require any cost to have it ready to rent to other schools.
So you're saying Annie Yates is a good school but still very usable?
I think it's usable, and it would, for rent out, I don't think it's anywhere near the same level of safety in terms of security nor earthquake safety as a new building, with all the earthquakes that I heard about this last, this last week in San Ramon. You know, Annie Yates was built in the nineteen forty's or fifty's, our youngest, smallest children are in the oldest part of that building, and they are safe. However, ECL, and Mr. Mary, maybe you could inform us on this, but is a much safer facility in a different universe in terms of earthquake standards, is my understanding?
You're correct.
I had, just had a question for, I think my lack of caffeine has helped. So in terms of the rooms here, I was wondering if, is that the older, the, I know we had a renovation project, is that the newer building, the newer rooms, or is this the whole-
This is everybody, all together, yeah, there are, that accounts for all the rooms.
So would this be, I mean, based on the comment in terms of the old, new, because I do know that building is older, but is it, would we be using in these scenarios, is this using the newer double that is gone?
Two-story.
Two-story, thank you, the two-story, is that the two-story usage, or is this for any, I mean, any configuration or use of-
It would, it would depend, in the K five model, where you need seventeen classes at least, but you're going to end up probably have, using about twenty-three, you would probably, you would end up using, I believe, both the new and the old.
And your support spaces too, you have to use the older part of the site as well.
Access and all that too. And then I know when this site was done, this is what I just remembered, when this site was used as an opportunity for Piedmont-
Oh, here.
-their construction here, they did, the, the third party did the renovation to bring it up, so if there were, and what bring it up means depends on whatever configuration that elementary schools, because it was for elementary school during their construction. So if there were bathrooms or different things, I know that Piedmont actually did the upgrades to cover, the district didn't have to pay for that district to come and use that space, so that was what the agreement was, and I know we netted maybe five hundred or so thousand dollars each-
Per year.
-per year for that.
No, it was more like six.
Oh, six, oh, that's where that six came from. So, I mean, that's where it was, but we didn't have, we weren't responsible or on the hook for having to do any upgrades in terms of using the classroom space, but that doesn't, that doesn't deal with what you're saying, but I just wanted to know that.
I was going to say, that's the reconfiguration cost, they have to configure it to their liking, it's not a, it's not an upgrade.
I mean, K one, K whatever.
So, but I just want to, I just want to make sure I heard what Dr. Rubio said correctly. So Annie Yates is not safe for our youngest kids.
I did not say that, Mr. Pat, I said nothing like that.
Well, I, then I'm really mishearing, so either it's safe or it's not, it's-
I never said it wasn't safe, Mr. Pat. I said, in fact, I said the opposite, I said it was safe, and I said the ECL site is much, much safer.
Okay, so there's gradations, I guess, okay, but I, you know, I think if it's safe, it's safe. If we're going to let kids in there, I don't care if they happen to go to Emory Unified or if they go to ABC Unified, I would want to make sure that their safety is, is, you know, at least at the state minimum, and so I, I just want to make sure I heard that correctly.
Yeah, absolutely, and I guess my issue is, for many, I would assume other people too, as parents and educators, I would want my child in the safest building possible, was my point.
Well, did you have anything else, Superintendent?
No, no.
Okay, all right, then I think, if there's no further comments, I think we're ready for public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant on that slide, I have a couple of, sorry, excuse me. So this is an overview of the email that we sent out to about five hundred and forty parents, a hundred and thirty-seven did open it up, fifty clicked through and hit submit, fourteen came back with comments. The average time showing is twenty-one minutes, because I think people left their phones or their computers on when they looked at the page probably, but of the fourteen comments that came back, I went ahead and placed most of them in your packets. We had just about a fifty-fifty split in terms of how parents commented regarding the sites. Ms. Tamer, can you advance this to the next slide? So as you flip through your packets, you'll see that we had parents, and I included what grade levels they represent, with different opinions about, you know, levels of excitement about moving and not moving. This first parent here on the left mentioned, you know, being concerned about having to go to two school sites, the parent on the right said, you know, we should keep the K five at Annie Yates. So if you flip through, you'll see both, there are some in Spanish, I can, but the board so would like, I can read those two, I didn't have time to get those translated, but the second, well, it's up to the board, if you, if you want me to translate those, I'd be glad to, but I did want to let you know that we had a number of differing opinions on this work and change, possible change, and that's all I have.
Just on the, on the modality point, the, since I got the email myself-
Yeah.
-and flipped through it, you couldn't go backwards.
Oh, I didn't know that, really.
If you go through it-
And then you're stuck?
You're stuck, and if you get to the end and you go, okay, well, now I want to go back and leave my comment, you couldn't.
Ah, I'll have to check on that, thank you, all right, I'll check on that.
Okay, so if we could improve that somehow.
That shouldn't have been the case, okay, thank you.
Okay. Any, any other questions on this point? Okay, we're now going to turn to public comment on, on our study session, Ms. Simpson? Yeah, yep, because folks at home want to hear you and see you.
I had lots and lots of questions, I've only written down a handful. One thing that seemed to be missing from this analysis was how much additional revenue would you gain by having both campuses open and broadening your enrollment? As it seems now, K through eight is pretty well saturated, and that where the biggest room for growth is probably nine through twelve, so if you had a six through twelve campus and you had more classrooms open, how much more money per student would you be bringing into the district that would offset the cost to having two campuses open? One thing, when you say that there is no additional cost in staffing by having everybody co-locate at ECL, I just don't, I can't imagine how that's possible, when you now have a bumped-up sense of security protocol that needs a bunch more operational oversight, I'd be curious to know how many gates are on this campus, this new one, versus how many are over at Annie Yates, and to get a sense of what it takes at Annie Yates to actually manage, you know, people coming in and out, and I know that there have been some issues in terms of coordinating between rec and school and allowing rec leaders in just through one gate, and that has been extremely challenging, so I don't know, I mean, from my vantage point, I'd really like to understand what the operational plan is in terms of who's going to be doing what and how you're managing it. There's actually zero visibility from my standpoint about how this is, how this is all going to happen, how all of the staff that you currently have now is going to cover And this, the slide that had, you know, the green or, that was comparing site density is a slide that, one, I think is outdated in terms of the enrollment at Annie Yates, but also is an apples and oranges comparison. What you would really need to do is compare, if you have acreage and population and site density at Annie Yates between K through eight, that you then do the same with the limited amount of space that you have for the K through eight building and the K through eight play space, because as you know, it would be very, you can't have K through eight kids on recess or break, whatever it is, in both locations, given the ratios of teachers to thirty students, like it just, it just can't happen at your current staffing, so essentially you'd have to compare the density and acreage, it would have to be an apples-to-apples comparison. Right now, it isn't, because you can't use all of that acreage at, at the new facility for the-
You're out of time.
-little kids, thank you.
Thank you.
I wish we had time to ask, I wish there was a form, format for asking questions and getting answers. The comment is so frustrating, okay. I would second everything that Ames said. In addition, the play structure thing, so on the green, go back, going back to the green slide, the play structure thing is definitely troubling, because as it is now, children, during most of their breaks, they aren't, they can't go onto the play structure because there isn't enough staff to watch them, so they literally can't go on it, so, and that's, that's one that's in, at Annie Yates, so if it's at a place where they literally have to be, like, walked over there, I can't imagine that they're going to be able to play on that either, if there's no staff, if there's no increase to the staff. Is there, right now on the plan, is there one principal at the K twelve ECL? Can someone, yeah, is that, can someone answer that?
I think it'd be two, is that, that thought.
Two principals.
Two principals would be P.
Two principals at the ECL now.
A nine twelve-
Okay.
And a K eight.
With these principals.
And a, and a VP.
Okay, so I'm not sure then if that raise scenario is right in all of those, because if we're already paying for two principals, aren't we still going to only have two principals in these other scenarios?
In the other scenarios, I think the, the-
Because right now we're paying for a-
Basis of the, would be three principals, someone for the K three or K five-
Okay.
Someone for the remainder of the middle grades, and someone, again, for the high school. That was the conversation between Mr. Patz and Superintendent Rubio, well, could, could if it were six twelve, could that just be one principal?
Right, all right, well, I don't want to lose, I still don't really understand that, but I'm going to leave that out there. And then I also was, a lot of the discussion from the previous meeting, well, where there was a lot of parents and teacher representation here, I know for a fact as the PTO representative and as a parent there, that all of those teachers and all of those parents still feel the same way that they want Annie Yates to, that is their ideal scenario, so I'll just say that. And then also, I also thought from that meeting that a lot of people thought that the possibility for expanding the six through, or the, the high school population, that that was an opportunity, that, that, so I, I second Ames' question about that, that I would love to see what is the, what does it look like if we boost enrollment in the high school, in the junior high in the high school, because that seemed, that, that is a potential revenue that seems to be missing from this scenario, is that if we have this opportunity, if we only have three hundred people at the ECL, but we need, but we really can fit six ninety-two, can't we find four hundred-plus junior high and high school students and fill that place up and get that extra revenue from them? That's what I think a lot of other parents and teachers were envisioning that scenario-
You're out of time.
-that we can offset, get the revenue there.
You're very welcome to email me anytime, and I'll be glad to get back to you, because I can answer some of those questions for you, yeah, any parents as well. I know it's difficult during public comment, but if you want to email me, I can answer your questions.
Additional public comment?
Hi, I'm Lauren LaPlante, the district school psychologist, and I wanted to address some of the questions that the board has had about wellness and space issues and inefficiencies and providing services to students. I'm really a fan of a K twelve site, I attended one myself, and I was really on board with this until I got more involved in the floor plans and the space, and so I wanted to share a couple of things. Related to providing wellness, that's behavioral health services and health services, the number one priority based on all of our needs assessments is behavioral health, and so that's counseling, psychological, social services for students. So we currently have fourteen staff providing behavioral health services, some of those are part-time, and we need at least eleven office spaces to do that, and there are currently only six spaces in ECL, and there is only one space in the K eight building, so it will be really hard for K eight students to access those behavioral health services in the school-based health center because of the access issues that were previously discussed. High school students will have no problem accessing those services, but, for example, I see kindergartners multiple times a day dropping by, supporting their behavior, and that will be really hard to go from one building to another to do that. In terms of fiscal impacts, Alameda County currently invests four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in behavioral health programs in our district, so this includes three full-time therapists from a Better Way Agency and one full-time therapist from Newbridge Foundation Drug and Alcohol Prevention Services. If we can't provide the required spaces that they need, we risk losing four FTE of free services. In terms of the question about the impact on elementary students accessing services within the school-based health center, I have data from the Center for Healthy Schools and Communities, there's twenty-eight school-based health centers, and in the thirteen, fourteen school year, students in grades K through five accounted for only two percent of school-based health center clients throughout the entire county. So the people that are using school-based health center, the health services, are sixth grade through twelfth grade, and so if Annie Yates stayed open as K through five, this would not have a significant barrier, because those students would still be able to get behavioral health services at Annie Yates. So that, just to clarify, only two percent of students using these services in school-based health centers for healthcare are in K through five. So I'm hoping that that's some helpful information that will shed some light on their significant issues with providing services that we need with all students on one campus. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. LaPlante. Other student, public comment, rather?
While he walks up, I'll take a moment and say thank you, and as a special educator for the last twenty years, the knowledge of school psychologists has always been invaluable, so thank you.
Okay, I think, so we've waited for five years for this meeting. The district has shut this meeting down for five years, and now finally here we're having it. I think we're having it because of the Board Member Patz's good, effective leveraging of his power, getting, getting parents here to complain. Now, there's a long history, we have had the change.org letter from three years ago, and seventy-three parents asked this board to please have a meeting to where we could discuss the wisdom of closing Annie Yates Elementary School, and that was ignored by this board. And so we've been waiting for five years for this, and now, this was supposed to happen, we were promised that these meetings about closing Annie Yates would happen during the ECL design phase, which happened from five years ago to about three years ago. Those meetings were noticed by, from the district, to every single household in Emeryville by the US Mail with heavy cardstock, glossy, four-color separation mailings. Here we, the, there's no comparison, so this is basically, that's basically a snow job. And in addition, what I'm hearing here tonight is, is you guys are selling, closing Annie Yates to us, and that's not why we're here, we're here to have a discussion with the parents and the citizens, is it a wise decision? We don't want to hear you selling this to us, and that's, that's in fact what you're doing here tonight, you're selling your, your idea about closing it. And then in addition, I mean, why there's so few parents here, why not seventy-three from the expressed interest that's in the past? Well, it's pretty obvious, because people don't believe that you have an open mind about this, from everything I've said, and in addition to the Board President Affeld previously announced to everybody that he had already made up his mind about co-location, and he's, we're going to do it, he said, he's not going to listen to anybody that says anything about keeping Annie Yates open, there's a comment he later had to retract, but you know, it's like when you make comments like that, it's, you know, people hear that, and then they, so they, they realize it's a waste of their time to be here, so they had to hire a babysitter here tonight and come- So they had to hire a babysitter here tonight and come to this when they suspect you've already made up your mind as you, you know, as you did elucidate that evening several months ago. So, the three minutes, they're allowing us three minutes now after five years? Whereas all those previous meetings, they were actual debates where the public could, could actually talk about the design issues. Now we're given three minutes to comment, and then the gavel will drop, and then the Anna Yates will close. And I just think that's a scam. I think that it's a, you're wasting everybody's time. It's a total waste of everyone's time, and you know, I just, it's extremely irritating.
Ian, you're out of time.
Of course, I have more things I wanted to say, but we're only allowed three minutes after five years.
Thank you, next.
Hi, I'm Barbara Ench, and I am married to a board member Patz.
Can you speak louder?
I could try, but I'm a little bit loud.
Alright, try to, try, just try to get close to the mic.
I just wanted to say that there are a population of student, school-age children that live in Emeryville. I know we have floated around the number that 40 to 60% of Emery's population of students right here are transfer ends. So we lose a large number of people that live in Emeryville. Students that could go to these schools, students that could benefit from local community services that they choose to transfer out of the district. John?
Yeah.
You probably will be very aware of the middle school problems. Once your child gets older, people don't want to send their children to middle school here, and they definitely don't want to send their high school students here. It's not a problem with the teachers. It has been a problem with superintendents bullying teachers, and driving away teachers, and not making teachers feel supported. I found another place for my son to go to school besides Emery, and I'm married to a board member. That's really sad. I live here, I've lived here for over 10 years, and I'm very, really disappointed. I don't want to give up on Anna Yates. I don't want to give up on the teachers that teach high school or middle school. I've really, I've really given up on this board. Hopefully some new members can ask some questions about the past that you didn't want to bring up. But the past is pretty bad of hiring superintendents, trying to hire principals that pleaded, you know, paid for accusations of harassment. That's a pretty sad bar to try to pass over on Emeryville residents when there are resident students that could go to our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
Hi, Ian. So I guess I just have a couple of comments to make on the side. Mainly like, for instance, if you're thinking about the parking on that school, the way that it was laid out, drop-off for K through 8 was going to be on 53rd. I bring my daughter to ECDC there on a regular basis, and the gentleman mentioned that there would be parking on 53rd. And that leaves me wondering where exactly the kids would be dropped off? The actual K through 8th grade children that don't, you know, were, because there's absolutely no parking. And so, would they be dropped off on the curb right there on 53rd? And so, one of the teachers at ECDC actually even brought up parking issue as a second issue. There was only a few parking spots over on that, on 47th Street. It seems pretty much that all of the traffic is kind of an issue around that area. So that might be something that you guys might want to keep in mind. For instance, that traffic light on 53rd, it never turns. It's absolutely broken, so it's kind of worrisome in terms of traffic right there. And I just really want to reiterate that I absolutely love Anna Yates. Like, it's really grown on me, that school, and the parents and the teachers that are involved there. I almost, you know, had an opportunity to leave the school district just last two weeks ago, and I decided to stick it out. That's how much I like it. So I really hope that you guys take that into consideration, that I think that there is like a lot of people that love the place a lot, that would give it a really good shot to make it a really great school. And I really want to second the, the concept of the fact that if you're opening up this as a high school, you could, you have this opportunity to me, it seems like, to make this an amazing school if you give it, if you take it right now. Because if you put the classrooms in there and you do the curriculum to attract all of these others people like she was talking about, like you have the opportunity, I feel like, right now to make it an unforgivably really wonderful, great school. But if you, if you shut, if you shut it down right now and you just conglomerate it all into that one area, it feels cluttered. I also want to remember that that other gentleman who was here the last time said that that, where the buses are parked, that location would be coming available. Which is, I feel like something that maybe was available when first 12 years ago, you guys decided that to build the school up. I kind of got the impression that that had been on the table, and then it had disappeared again. So, I don't know. I mean, I think that people are really into Anna Yates right now, and there's a really great curricula, like, there's a great community there. And I feel like you should give it a chance to grow. And I feel like you should take the chance to make the high school like an unforgivably great school, which you have the opportunity to do now. By, you know, building like a great film studio, by like taking science, you know, you want to go into science, it could be a magnet school.
You're out of time.
So, that's what my, yeah, I think you should take the opportunities you have now.
Thank you for your thoughts. Any other public comment? Okay, alright, well, thank, thank you for all the parents and other members that have come out tonight. Well, you've had, you've had your time, Mr. Donahue. We appreciate, we appreciate all of your thoughts. Okay, we're going to move on to our next item, which is the consent calendar. Do we have any other? Member Dice has asked me if there's another study session to come. I think that there are, you know, some additional questions we've raised. That, yeah, there will be, I think there should be. I assume there's no objection to that.
I'd be glad to bring back any specific questions. I don't know if the board's willing to do a full study session or not, but I can, I know I have some follow-up items to get back to all of you.
Alright, well-
You can let, you can let me know.
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll let you know, and I, you know. I, I think I heard, you know, we heard various different flexibility configurations. We heard a suggestion around enrollment scenarios and versus revenue. So I think those are things to consider.
The master schedule.
Yep. Under the consent agenda, are there any items that members would like to pull?
We don't need to pull it, but I'll need to abstain from the approval of the minutes. Yeah.
Okay. Let me check my notes, see if I have anything to pull. No, I don't.
Regarding the agenda?
Consent, yeah. Do you have any warrants for the minutes or the?
Yes, for the minutes.
So you'd like to pull the minutes? Alright, why don't we pull the minutes? Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so let's deal with the warrants and personnel action and the ratification items.
I'd move item 1, 3, and 4 for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A roll call, please, Ms. Tamar?
Member Dice?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Patz?
Yes.
Member Ash?
Yes.
President Affeldt?
Yes. Alright, those items pass unanimously. Let's, minutes, member Marion?
Clarification, just for the record, regarding closed session, item K-1, did that item actually occur? And if it's inferring sale of Anna Yates, it was an erroneous?
Oh, it should have been.
Ralph Hawley, or?
No. The real property negotiator.
Oh, had the wrong school site.
Mr. Marion, the, what was listed on the closed session was a conversation about Ralph Hawley's school site, not Anna Yates.
Okay. Okay, for some reason, it's been construed as it was a meeting with the closing of a possible sale of Anna Yates.
Yeah, and there's a lot of inaccuracies out there on the internet and public.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll move approval of item H-2.
I would just note, before that gets seconded, since we've got the matter open, Ms. Tamar, you misspelled my name on the, under the G4. Is it G4? No, G2. You gave me an extra L.
Sometimes we do that just to see if you'll catch it.
There you go.
I've lost a few dollars on getting that.
Well, I wasn't going to pull it, but I did see it.
Without revision?
Without revision?
I'd move.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Member, member Ash?
Yes.
Member Dice?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Patz?
Abstain.
President Affeldt?
Yes. So, motion passes with four I-votes and an abstention. Okay, we are on to our discussion items. And we've moved that around a little bit. I see, I see Mr. Roush here. So I think we can go right to the COC report? Is that right, superintendent?
Yes. Good evening, I mean, I'm sorry. I thought we were doing I-4 first, I missed Mr. Donahue. I'd like to say good evening and thank you, Mr. Roush, for being here to deliver the annual COC report. I know that it's taken a lot of time. Mr. Roush, would you mind coming up and delivering your report in front of the board? Just some background for the public watching. In November 2002, the community of Emeryville passed a Prop. 39, measure known as Measure J, which supports capital improvements for our facilities. And as always, the school district expresses its thanks to the community for that support. One of the requirements of the bond measure is that the Citizens Oversight Committee is formed and oversees our bond work, and that the COC also presents to the school board an annual report. And I want to really thank Mr. Roush for being the chair of that committee for quite a while, and for all your work that you've done this evening.
Thank you, thanks so much. Thanks for having me. And the first thing I want to do is introduce myself. I'm Tom Roush, I'm the, actually, former chair of the COC. We've elected a new chair.
You'll have to bring it up, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
We've elected a new chair to the COC, and I have been on the committee since the spring of 2011. And I've been chair for over two years, I think, but who's counting? And I want to apologize, first of all, for the lateness of this report. We usually try and get it to you, as you know, around the May or June timeframe. But because of my work schedule and heavy travel commitments, I just wasn't able to pull it all together until now. So, the COC did approve it in September, so what's in your packet has been voted on and approved by the COC. And what I thought I'd do is, you know, I'm not going to read this line for line, what I've done in the past, and let me see if this sits well with you, is to give you kind of an overview of the structure of the report and highlight some of the findings, some of the more salient pieces of the report, and then answer any questions that you might have. Does that sound like a reasonable approach?
Certainly, go for it.
Okay, great. So it really describes who we are, what we do, what we found, and what we recommend. So it's really kind of those four things that we try and encapsulate in this report. Not a lot changes in the report in the first couple of pages, you know, for, for very good reasons. This is really sort of the testament that the, as Superintendent Rubio had pointed out, this is where we came from, this is why we exist. And that doesn't change. So naturally, that sort of just rolls on from year to year. Where things do have changed is things like COC appointment and membership, which would be on pages 3 and 4. And there you'll see that we have made changes over time. We've restricted or reduced the number of folks who serve on the COC. We're down to 11 voting members, that's our maximum capacity with a quorum of six people. I think when we first got started, we were as high as 17 or 18, something like that, and I think the quorum was in the double digits. But as we managed the committee, we realized, first of all, we were starting to lose members, so we wanted to reduce that membership to something more reasonable, and also, the quorum had to be reduced accordingly. So we voted to do that in January 2013. If you turn the page, you can see the composition of the COC. This is on page 4. And the statutory members and the designated members. And this is all outlined in, in our bylaws, right? We didn't make this up. This is what we've been told by our bylaws that we need to abide by. Okay? Then the scope of work, again, that doesn't change much, which makes sense because the scope of work has stayed essentially the same since the beginning of the committee. This, the next couple of pages really kind of talk about what we do in terms of reviewing expenditures, which of course is one of the most important functions of the COC, is to make sure that we're taking a look at the expenditures that are reported against the project, and to make sure in particular that all the funds that are being spent are in spend in the direction of bond measure J, right? So these are some of the reports that we look at. You can see the six there, memorandum of understanding, budget reports, the independent financial audit, the performance audit. And then we receive monthly summary report expenditures, transaction detail reports, and monthly warrants reports at our, at our meetings. So if you see, if you skip down to those three bullets, specifically, these are the things that we look at, at every one of our meetings. And we have a summary top sheet that breaks it out by option code, and I'll walk you through that in just a sec. And then there's the detailed transaction behind that. And that really gives us an opportunity to ask questions about, well, what does this mean? Why is this particular expenditure showing up? And walk us through it. And it's either a question that can be answered by Swinerton, most recently, or Roy Miller, and who's the gentleman who was after Roy?
Dave Gallagher.
Oh. Dave Gallagher, right, and Dave Gallagher, right. Or it's somebody from the financial district office, or the, a financial director from the district office. Back then it was Mark Benet, and now that would be Dora Sue, okay? So, the next couple of pages are about, describe some past bond activity for those years, 2011 to 2012, 2012 to 2013. We didn't have any bond activity during the writing of this report or the, the time period that this report covers. So that just rolled in from the previous report. We thought it was good to keep it in there, though. And then this is where things get a little bit more interesting. This is the Measure J, I'm sorry, I'm on page 9. The Measure J Fund 21 categories, and these are all broken out by option code, right? So these are the option codes, kind of the chart of accounts, that we look at for the way that expenditures are expressed to us, about where the money's being spent. So you can see it's A through M are the Fund 21 categories, right? And that just calls them out. And then, this is what I did as part of this report. Toby Fen, who was very, very helpful in all of this, gave me an enormous data dump of all of the expenditures associated with bond measure J since its inception, all the way back, right? And I was able to ferret out through option codes, which is what you see on page, page 9, exactly what had been spent against each one of those option codes. And when I came up with questions I didn't quite get, some money didn't quite fit the category or didn't quite fit the date range, I would go back to Toby, and she would always give me a very practical and very reasonable explanation of why that was so. So I went through all of this, it took me probably a couple of weeks. So, I went through all of this, it took me probably a couple of weeks to go through all of the data, and after doing it independently, with just, you know, some support from Toby and Dora as well, I was able to tie out to the numbers that Swinerton, or that Toby was reporting as part of the project. Okay, so that was very reassuring to me, is that's sort of the bottom line.
And Toby is?
Her exact title? Right. So, that was very reassuring to me, that we were able to tie out to the same numbers that were being reported, and we did it on an independent basis. I felt like I was doing it on an independent basis to get to those numbers. Okay? So, you know, there's a, breaking it out by object code and fiscal year, you can read through all of that. And then, I think a particularly important part of this report is, on page twelve, the independent audit summary of findings. We don't write the annual report until that independent audit is conducted. And you can see in italics, the results of our procedures, and this is from Crowe and Horwath. The result of our procedures indicated that in all significant respects, Emery Unified School District expended Measure J general obligation funds for the year ended June thirty two thousand and fourteen, only for the specific projects developed by the district's, district's Board of Trustees and approved by the voters. In accordance with the requirements of Proposition thirty-nine, as specified by Section one B three C, Article, well, I'm gonna take a guess, that's gonna be thirteen A of the California Constitution, right? And then, we added, based on our review of financial reports throughout the year ending June thirty two thousand and fourteen, the Citizens Oversight Committee concurs with the findings made by Crowe and Horwath. Okay? Then there's a couple of pages that follow, that represent progress. We put this under the section of community engagement. This is when groundbreaking was occurring during the project, those are, I think, two thousand and fourteen pictures. Yep, groundbreaking begins in two thousand and fourteen, thought it might be good to include some of the activity there. And then, a docu, or a page that's always been in this report about our relationship with the City Schools Committee, the duties of the Board Superintendent as a way of differentiating what the COC is responsible for and what it's not. And we also did, and I'll walk you through this in a second, the approval process for purchase orders and invoices as part of this subsection, but I'll get to that when we get, when we make it to the appendix. So, the final kind of part of this report is findings and recommendations. And these are the recommendations, the findings and recommendations from the previous year, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen. And what we do is we repeat the finding from that year, the recommendation that we made, and then any kind of action taken, right? So, it kind of closes the loop on findings and recommendations at the end of every year. Okay? And then, if you keep going, findings and recommendations for the two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen year. The first one is something that we, you know, always encourage USD administrators, EUSD administrators and consultants to make relevant presentations to the COC about curriculum and financial matters and programs relating to the ECCL project. It's just good for us to stay engaged with what's going on, right? So, that we just encourage that to continue. So, the other one is about membership. We do require a quorum of engaged, objective and collaborative community members to conduct its business. We do recommend that the school board continues to actively recruit new members for the COC, particularly for student members. We have opportunity to bring two student members, it's in the bylaws, into the COC, and we've tried, over the years, to do that with limited success. Obviously, we don't have two student members, we had a couple show up, I think probably last year, to one of our meetings, and never saw them again. So, I don't know what the school board can do, what the opportunities are there, but we've long thought, as part of the COC, as a way of also making sure that we always have a quorum, that two student members would be a real benefit to our committee. So, we encourage you to help us with that. And then, financial reporting, you know, regular financial updates from the Emery Unified School District. We just, again, recommend receiving accurate and clear financial reports based on financial transactions. We have some ideas about how to upgrade those reports, make them, they're already clear and accurate, but there are other ways of portraying some of the financial information that's presented to us that may make it even easier for people to understand. So, that's really the basis for the report. The last little piece I'll talk about is an appendix, and it's, this is the, there was a request to walk us, to be walked through, the invoice approval process, and I apologize, this is kind of hard to read, and I don't have my reading glasses. But the first one, the top one, is the standard invoice process, this is sort of the process that's used for most invoices. Then, for consulting contracts and change orders under fifteen thousand dollars, that looks like a PO process, it follows a different flow. And then, when those contracts and change orders are between fifteen thousand and eighty-six thousand, there's yet another flow. And then, for anything over eighty-six thousand dollars, there's a purchase order process that's followed. And the place where this came from, I went back and forth with Toby and John and Dora, and we worked it out over a couple of weeks, I was the one who produced these flow charts, happy to turn them over, so they can be updated as things change, or as policies get updated. So, it was, I think, a very helpful exercise for everybody to really sort of understand that we do have in place a very rigorous and thoughtful PO, purchase order approval process, and it's now documented, okay? So, I'll stop there and ask if anybody has any questions.
Questions, board members?
I was just gonna appreciate your, your service. I think it's been, since you've been a part of it and definitely chairing, it's been really remarkable to see the level of reporting. I mean, I think the reports just get that much more clear and consistent, so I think those who are closely monitoring, i.e. you guys, are able to get what you need and distill the information where you need it to be, and I think that's really helpful and reassuring for the board, as well as the community. And I know this is often through reports to the CLC, excuse me, the CLC's reports to the City Schools Committee as well. I think this is very valuable, so, thank you again.
And thank you for your work on the flow charts, that, you know, is a first, and I think helpful documentation for all of us to see, and particularly the public, as part of the oversight work that you're doing. This is a, if you can just catch me up on the timing, so this is your thirteen fourteen report, that you're submitting in October fifteen, and when is the fifteen, fourteen, fifteen report and fifteen sixteen, so what's the timing on the?
Right, so the fourteen, fifteen, the next report will come, the writing will start after the audit report comes out, which I believe is early December, most years. And then, the COC, if it's not run by Tom, and somebody actually has the time to do this, January, February, March are set aside to begin writing the report, with the intent of delivering it around the May or June timeframe. Now, Andrea Inouye, who is the new COC chair, I've already let her know that, you know, I'm more than happy to help her with that report. We've got, I think, a really fine financial reporting structure in place that she can just continue to build on. I think Miguel Duin has joined the COC, if I'm not mistaken, and he has a background and expertise in financial reporting in his professional life, so I think he's gonna be a real asset for the team, and be able to help work through any kinds of nuances and things that need to happen. So, in answer to your question, I would anticipate a May or June delivery of the next one. So, it'll, it'll come much quicker than this year's report.
Yeah, that's helpful, thanks, yeah. Yeah, you're right about Member Duin, he's a, an accountant, and actually, is employed by Berkeley Unified to oversee their bond program.
Right.
Or at least, you know, track, track the expenses from the district side.
Miguel will find it.
Yeah. Okay, other questions, or? Okay, do we have any public comment on this item?
Before I, before I leave, I just want to thank all of you, very much, for all of your support, it's been a terrific ride, four years now. And in particular, you know, John Baker and his team, Toby, have just been nothing but supportive throughout the process. We had to kind of make a little bit of a transition on the COC, I think we had been sort of taken a lot of things for granted, a lot of things were supplied to us in terms of services, that John was very diplomatic about pointing out, well, you know, we really can't do that, and we need to make some changes around that, and he handled that really well, and I've been nothing but impressed with the level of service that I received from John. And anybody who's listening to this, the, you know, the committee that I served with has just served with distinction. They've, they've come prepared, they're bright people, they ask really good questions, they're thinking about ways to make things better all the time, and I think we were really lucky to find a core group in the community to serve on this very important committee, and to do it really well, and to do it with a great deal of humor and good grace. So, I have every belief and estimation that'll continue under the new leadership, and I've, as I said, I've already let Andrea know that I'm more than prepared to help her with the transition, because I believe so much in this project.
So, now, you are not just stepping down as chair, you're stepping off the committee?
I am.
Yeah.
I just don't have the time to devote to this, and, you know, it became clear to me this year that I've taken on additional responsibilities at work, and I just do not have the time that this really requires.
Well, the, the board thanks you for your service. I mean, it's very important, it's, it's not just required by the law, but it's a critical piece of, of any kind of major bond financing program, that there be an independent citizen committee, making sure that things are getting spent, and you're, you're able to look at this, you know, in much more detail, and check our staff's work than, you know, individual board members are, and you've got a whole committee focused just on that.
Right.
And so, we appreciate your bringing your, your time and energy and expertise to the work, and, and helping to, you know, build this project, and make sure that it is being built with integrity, so thank you, Tom.
Okay, thanks, all right, keep going.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now, this is, do we actually formally accept the item? I think we do, is it an action item, or do we just take it in hand and thank the committee? Because we don't have the power to reject it, I guess.
It is what it is.
Okay, the next item that we've moved up is the update on ECCL.
All right, good evening, Mr. Baker, and everybody, again, usual, and very helpful updates from Mr. Baker with Swinerton, the company that manages the project for the city and the school district. You can, yeah, you can get rid of that, Mr. Baker.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Rubio. This is the monthly update for progress on the ECCL project. We've had lots of discussion ECCL tonight, so it'll be nice to see what's been going on the last, the last few weeks, last month on the project. Want to get, once again, to orient everyone, Buildings A, B, C, D, and E, Building A is the community, the community building, Building B is the administration building, Building C is the K through eight school, Building D, the high school, and Building E is the pool and gym. Construction update, if you?
Can you go back to that a second?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Is this an old rendering of the project, or is this the current rendering?
This is, this is, this was, rendering was done, I believe, about a year and a half ago, but there's no, there have been no changes to this rendering.
So, is it just covered by Building B? Because I can't see the play area between Buildings B and C, is that still there?
Yeah, it's because, it's because of the aerial view, Building B is blocking part of the.
Okay, that's all I wanted to check, thanks.
The big news on Building E is our roofing replacement, roofing membrane is now complete. As you'll recall from past updates, we had to redo much of the structure and sheathing at Building E roof, which caused delays to that project. Now, we've got the roofing on, so we're all completely done with that process. The drywall installation inside the gym, which had to wait until that roofing structural replacement was done, is in progress, and actually is about ninety percent complete now. Gym mechanical electrical plumbing roughens, that's the work inside, all of the mechanical electrical plumbing work inside the walls and ceiling are now complete. High school roofing and all the mechanical electrical plumbing roughen is now complete also. High school exterior insulation is complete, that's all of the sheathing all the way around the, the high school, with the exception of the part that will, will face the, the second floor deck. So, basically, at the high school, all the window frames are now in, all the exterior sheathing is in, so the next step on the exterior is to install glazing, which will close the building in, and then the actual exterior stucco. The, also, the, the high school drywall is now about eighty percent complete, so most of that drywall, maybe even ninety percent completed, is now in. The community building, Building A, the roofing is now complete, drywall will commence soon, and that building will be closed in. The, the big news here is that all the roofing at Buildings E, D, and A are complete, and, which is a big issue with upcoming rain. And those buildings will be what's called closed in, Building E really is closed in now. Building D will be closed in within the next, by, by the end of November, Building A will be closely thereafter. The admin Building B wood frame is in progress, we've now just about framed up the second floor. Once the roofing is done, all of our framing will be done for all the buildings except for Building C. And at Building C, metal decking is in progress, we've poured the second floor slab, the third floor slab will be poured at the beginning of next week. That will commence all of our concrete work for the entire project, other than sidewalks. Interstate conditions and challenges, the, one real good bit of news is we're really, I think we're about, I would say about ninety percent past the exposure we have on, on these sorts of things. We, the big ones that we've had were the lead paint, the gym steel framing, that's now complete, the gym roof sheathing replacement is now complete. Our coordination with all the agencies is about ninety percent complete, all we really have left with the agencies are the various sign-offs that will have to take place with, with these agencies, but all of our permits are complete, and all the work that requires permits in the street, in the, in the public right of ways, is complete, with the exception of some utility connections along Fifty-third Street, and also the signalization improvements that we have on, on San Pablo Avenue. Utility resequencing actually is now complete, that was really completed last week. We now have full access to the community commons between Buildings C and D, we've now completed the need for having access in there, so we've now started constructing the link between Buildings C and D, which includes the elevator and stair for that, for the high school. The DSA changes the Building C steel, those, now that fabrication is complete, that, that is now done, and we know the schedule impacts part of that. I will say that right now, the Building C, the K through eight school, there has been about, that resulted in about a two-month delay to the project, we were able to pull one month in by resequencing the ground floor slab. We saw about a month, and we're gonna try work over the next few months to pull that back in, so we can hit our target of completion of June of next year. Right now, we're planning for a wet, a wet winter, the focus has been on closing in Buildings A, D, and E.
Just, I'm sorry, just go back to, on the, on the last component, that you lost two months to what, because of what?
The Building C, which is the K through eight school, and we went through the Division of State Architect approval process, which was after construction had started, a number of revisions were made, which is not in common with DSA. In fact, actually, they're fairly, they're fairly minimal. However, what happened is, is that because we had to make some revisions, we had the steel fabricator, we were pulled out of the queue, we had been in the queue for their fabrication. The steel delivery was to have been July, excuse me, June fifteenth, it did not take place until early September, so we had about an eight-week delay in steel delivery to the site. We were able to pick up a month by actually pouring the ground floor slab early, by resequencing that work. We saw another month that we've now, that we We saw another month that we've now, that we are currently behind. We're trying, we're working with Turner to pick up that month so we can finish on time in terms of contract completion date, which is June of next year.
Thanks.
Does that make sense?
Yep, it does.
Okay.
Thanks for, okay.
But again, we, we've, we've now, since October fifteenth has passed, the, the state water control, the state water resources control board requires an updated storm water pollution prevention plan for the upcoming winter. Those measures are now, have been approved and are now in place. If you go by the site, you'll see some additional drainage elements to anticipate if we have, when we have rainy weather. The team's focus has been in closing in those three buildings, buildings A, D, and E, so that we can complete the interior work without, without having delays if we have a rainy day. So one of our big milestones has been the completion of the curb and sidewalk work along Fifty Third Street. You can see there, the construction fence is still on the street. That has now been moved in off of the sidewalk, so we've now returned parking along Fifty Third Street to the community. About two-thirds of it. We saw the little piece towards San Pablo. That's, I think, will make the neighbors very happy. Again, this work was going to be, was scheduled to be completed in April of next year, so we picked up about eight, we did this about eight months early so that we could return parking to the community along Fifty Third Street and ease the sort of impacts of the construction operations and parking in the general neighborhood.
If you can go back to that, that's for a turnaround?
So the way this works is there will be what's not constructed, is there's a small circular island that will go, you can see where the, where it swings out. Will allow cars that are traveling west on Fifty Third Street to do a U-turn around the island and you can see where the curve comes in and then drive back up towards San Pablo along Fifty Third and that's where the drop-off is at the entrance to the K through eight school. And that had been mentioned by one of the public commentators earlier tonight.
Are we, I heard we're losing the right-hand turn lane on that street as well?
That is correct.
Okay.
And the reason for that is that one of the, and I, I, this was before our involvement in the project, but I believe during the SEQA process or, and also working with city planning, that's a very large intersection and it's the primary pedestrian approach for students approaching the K through eight school. So what the requirement is, which I, I believe actually is planning and SEQA, is that we're doing bull bouts, we're bringing the corners closer, we're shortening the length of the crosswalks, doing signalization improvements there. So each of those four corners will have what are called bull bouts, where you bring this, the corner out further and that, by doing that eliminated the right-hand turn lane from Fifty Third going to San Pablo.
So is there, is there an analysis of the traffic?
Yeah, there's a traffic-
More by not moving-
Quite a traffic, quite a, a traffic, quite extensive traffic study plan was done on the site. I don't have the information right now to report on what the impact of taking that turn lane out was, but I can certainly look into that and report back in future meetings. I'm not sure, the, the, I do know that the entire sequence of cars coming down, turning back, dropping off and then, and leaving the area was well thought out. In fact, that's actually why this turnaround was, was decided to be included. But I, I'm not sure exactly what the, what, what the specific impact of that right turn lane being removed is. However, the, again, the bull bouts and, and shortening the crosswalks was, was intended for school, was, for children, schoolchildren's safety.
And the bull bouts will be on, on both sides of San Pablo?
On all four corners.
On all four.
Yeah. And that work will be done again next spring with, with the remainder of the site concrete.
I was just gonna know, I live right there. I mean, I live literally. The traffic is horrendous. So anything to slow down, force people to stop because they don't now?
That's actually the intent.
It is the worst. It has gotten so much, it's terrible over there. So I'm looking forward to the changes, actually, because one of the, I'm, I go Boyer to fifty-four. I live in the cul-de-sac and just coming around, it's terrible. People don't stop. You have people who work, who go to the ECDC. I mean, I see people making U-turns from ECDC, right, I mean, right, they don't come out. They just turn from the street and go. I mean, it's pretty bad, so it's pretty congested over there.
Yeah, and on Fifty Third, the other, the other reason why the traffic turnaround is also is traffic commi measure on that street, so people aren't racing up and down that street.
We need it bad. It's needed, it's really needed over there, actually. I didn't realize it until start seeing the changes to, that kind of see the benefits of it even more so because of the traffic. It's really, it's pretty bad. And it's the only, I mean, it's, it doesn't have, it, does it have speed bumps? Or it has, it does, it does have a couple.
Yeah, it does, it does.
Yeah, it's Oakland, so it has speed bumps. But, I mean, that's one of the things, it's pretty wide and a lot of traffic through there, so. Question about that tree, though, over there? I'm just curious. I know that may not necessarily be part of the plan, but that tree is really dangerous. That one that's sticking right out there, that largest one, it's on the other, opposite side.
Oh, that oak tree, the one on the left side?
It's like drops down, like it's in the wires. It's pretty bad. I don't know if there's any-
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the requirements are for you, the City of Oak. That's, that was City of Oak and we have jurisdictions.
Yeah, of course.
I don't know.
It's pretty bad. It's, it's a bad, I mean, I've seen, it's fall, you know, parts, branches have fallen, tree, you know, that has happened. So I was just curious if that was part of any of our efforts at any point.
No, it is not.
Maybe we can send them a suggestion or tell me how to do that, because it's pretty bad. It's dark over there. Can't see anything, I'm sorry.
Okay. Any other questions about the Fifty Third Street?
Just a minor one here. I know there was a comment pertaining to the parking along there. Is there going to be parking all the time or during drop-off? I wouldn't believe that there'd be parking along the drop-off lane. Is that my, is that, is that assumption correct?
I, I, I don't, I believe that, I believe that it intends it to be signed that during drop, during pickup that there's no parking there, but I, I don't know, actually. We, we can look at that also.
Yeah, because it is kind of a concern because you have a drop-off lane there and there's parking. It does make sense.
Right.
And can I note, just because I know too much, is that, that we just recently, in the last few years, gave that street back as a parking. It was red for years. I mean, since I was even in high school. So it's been, it had been red for a number of years. And the challenge here is that you have people who store cars and vans with stuff in it that doesn't have anything to do with mobility at all. They just leave, they dump cars there, so we really need to make sure that it's not going to be, you know, something will be towed. Because we've had that where cars are just, because people have five cars. I mean, they literally have five cars and they're parking no, you know, cars that are inoperable. They're just parked there. So that's what, so I was kind of glad to see that had at least changed that up a little bit. But that's what we'd had prior to, was cars could sit there for an exhaustive amount of time and, and there was just kind of element situation.
Yeah, my recollection is, well, you said, Mr. Baker, that, that's all supposed to be drop-off lane.
I think that's correct, actually.
During school hours and that one can park there later during set hours, but once the pickup hours come, then, then not. So can you double check on that?
Yeah, I, I, apologies for not knowing what, how that works, but I know that's in the traffic control plan is how that all works through there.
And I, I drop typically drop my son off in the back of Annie Yates' and there's not a lot of room there to, to do that right now. There's basically room for maybe three cars. You know, coming the way I come, you go around the, this kind of configuration, the, the island and maybe three, but if someone's, as people do, they park there, they leave it, they don't, you know, it's oftentimes, there's only room for one or two cars. So there's, this would be significantly more space, but it would be good if you could confirm that it is in fact, space will be used for drop-off.
And just one more, look, I just remembered too, I think that part of that reason was because there was a lot of double parking, very unsafe behaviors. And I know that street, from what you just, you just reminded me, I know that that whole street was intended for the drop-off because it was a lot of unsafe activity happening at Annie Yates' with double parents, you know, double parking and want kids to dart through and, and have and have. Police, I think, have really helped us over the years trying to kind of change the mindset about letting kids dart through cars to get to the curb. So I think that's, I know that was the intent was for it to be along, like you said, along the drop-off. It'd be good to get a firm, but I, I, that's what I recall as well.
Yeah, I think what we'll, what we'll do is take a look at the traffic control plan so we can report back on what this configuration is, is intended to be. But that, that's what actually stipulates how, what, what, what hours are for parking and turn-off and drop-off and that sort of thing.
I was just going to point out that there's actually two sides for pickup and drop-off at Annie Yates'. So it's not just the three there, there's the other side as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The parking issue too, it was crazy.
Yeah, and, and this alone is, I believe, longer than the two sides combined. That was part of, may not be analysis that you saw, Mr. Baker, but I think it relates back to some of these previous slides. But that, that is, that is a good point. And, um, are you going to get to the Forty Seventh Street side?
I don't have an image of that here. We've not, we've not installed that, that curb, that, that curb work. All of the site concrete was intended to be installed at next spring. The reason why we did this early was to, we had complaints from the people on Fifty Third Street about blossom parking. And so we resequenced the schedule in order to do this early so we could give that community back some parking. The construction fence now is in board and you can actually park along there now.
Oh, maybe.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions about the new curb and sidewalk on Fifty Third Street? All right. So this is a view looking up, this is actually a view looking at where the, the entrance to the K through eight school will be. On the left, you see the, the scaffolding outside the community building, building A. On the right is building C and in the background is, is building B with the trees along San Pablo in the far background. You can see, actually, if you look carefully, the, the, the metal deck is now at the second and third floor. In fact, the second, third-end roof of building C. We've now poured the concrete slab at the second floor and next week we'll pour the concrete slab at the fifth side. I'm sorry, at the first, second floor and then next week we'll pour the third floor concrete slab. This is inside building A showing, we've got all of our ductwork now complete and so we're ready to do sheet rock on the walls and then do this, the, the ceiling above that. This is a view looking between building B on the left, that's the teen room, and building C on the right, which is the K through eight school, into the community commons. And again, if you look carefully, you can see the metal deck that's now been installed on building C on the right. This is a view of looking at the entrance of building B, which is the administration building. The room on the right is the teen room. And then the double-height space on the left is the large two-story lobby of the admin building. That, you'll see that steel framing there because that's a big glass wall. We did a tour of the art, the city's arts commission a couple of weeks ago, which we're looking at art, locations for their art, their art program. One of, one of the opportunities is a, either a mural or a sculpture in the, the high space of that building that you'll see on San Pablo Avenue. So now that you see these spaces coming into, and if you drive down San Pablo, you can see that'll be a glass wall that you'll see as you head southbound. This is in, again, in the community commons, this is looking the other direction, north. In the background, you'll see the low one-story, that's the teen room, which is actually a solid wall and a backdrop for a performance space at the, as that community commons narrows down. At the north end of it is a bit of a platform that you can use as a stage. And now you can see the, the, the three-story height of the K through eight school on the left there. This is a view on the field side of the K through eight school, showing now the exterior stairs going into place and you can now see the shape of that building as it goes up. This is further out in the community commons. This on the left, so you'll see the, the, that's the multi-use room. Those roof trusses are, are at the top. There's a long span space there. If you have the chance to do a, a walk or anytime that you'd like to come do a walk, we can show one of the most exciting parts of the, of the project is how large and spacious that multi-use room is. This is now a view of, this will be, this is a view as if you come through entering the high school. Again, where this equipment is now shown, that's now out of the way now. And we're actually now starting to construct the elevator and stair between, for the high school, which will be between these two buildings. So we've until now had to have this access to do the site utilities, which were delayed. Those are now done and so that completion, that construction is, is complete. In the background, you see that the second floor framing on building B is now underway. And you can see that now, that's actually now all complete and we're actually starting to do the roof framing in that building.
I might just add, could you go back, Mr. Baker? That, that is the reason that we're having some delay with the high school. The high school building itself will be completed and done. The issue for us is the elevator there. Correct. If we put that elevator and deck in now, the turn of construction cannot get in and through this pathway to continue to-
And now that we're done at work, we can actually start closing this in and doing, starting that construction of the elevator and stair. This is a view, again, in the community commons looking, no, I'm sorry. This is a view from the, looking across the parking lot. This is the high school. If you look on the right-hand side, you'll see that yellow and silver, that's exterior insulation. If you look really carefully, there's actually a window in there behind the, the netting. So on three sides of the high school, we now have all the window frames are in place and all that sheathing is complete. Our next steps are going to putting glazing in and doing the stucco work. This is, this is, this is, this view is actually into, this is where the elevator and stair will go into the building. You can see those walls are not yet complete. We need to build that steel deck, then we can complete those walls. These have now actually have, have had weather protection installed so the interior construction can continue while we build that exterior metal deck. And that's just a close-up view. That actually shows, you can see some of the sheet rock that's now up in there. If you walk in this building now, all the sheet rock is now completed on the classrooms. You can walk in the classrooms and now see the walls and the windows and all that. This is actually a view of, of the gym. We have, the gym is all closed in now. This is the, this is the new, the addition to the gym under the previous overhang. If you recall, there was a big breeze window there. We've now enclosed that space to provide restrooms for the, the gym particip-, the gym spectators and that, that second floor space is the mechanical space. This is actually now all, all that, that frame you see, that's all now complete and the scaffolding will come down probably in a couple of weeks. This is inside of building E. This is also now all sheet rock this week. This, you can see this photograph was taken on the nineteenth. We're about, we've done all the sheet rock of all the interior walls except for about, I'd say fifteen percent. That will probably be done by the end of this week. Some additional information, low voltage systems, scope and cost are confirmed. We're still doing a little bit of tinkering with the, the, the data and telecommunications scope. There are some additional changes that we may want to, to take a look at, but security and audiovisual systems are pretty much complete and determined. Furniture selection procurement is underway. Gym pool procurement, the purchase orders is complete. We've actually, those are all in, it's just now a matter of scheduling when that's delivered. The piggyback scope of work is being finalized as well as the independent vendor items. The main thing we're doing is we're looking at confirming the lowest pricing that we can get with those two procurement methods so that we can make best use of the bond dollars. And that completes the update for this month.
Any questions?
What, what does the low voltage system?
That's a terminology we use for that. That's, that's all the, that includes security systems, data, information technology, telecom, telephone, and audiovisual. All those things are, in the industry, we call them low voltage because they're not electrical per se, but they're done by the electrical contractor. And what we did about several months ago, we embarked upon a confirmation of those systems with the city and the district. The main reason being that these systems, technology changes. And many of these things were designed three years ago. We want to revisit them to make sure we're putting in the best technology. And we have made a number of changes, actually. And so that confirmation scope, other than some data tell items we're still, I mean, still looking at, we've now really pretty much completed that confirmation and made quite a few changes to make sure that we have current technology. And especially on the IT side, we're looking at making sure we have technology that we think will be good ten years out.
Okay.
Just one question, Mr. Baker. Pertaining to the gymnasium and it coming online earlier than the rest of the campus, how are you addressing the fire alarm, its working and its integration at?
A good question. We're doing, in fact, actually today, we talked, there's a couple of things. We're, we're now confirmed, we're in the process of confirming our temporary exiting with DSA so we can occupy the gym and be able to exit on the back and sides of it because we have construction taking place on, to the north and east of that. And so we've got, they, they've, they've approved our exiting path, strategy for that. We're doing a temporary fire alarm control panel that'll, that, that basically, because the, the primer one will be in building C, it's not even roughed in yet, so we're doing that. We're also doing, we have to do temporary, sort of temporary fire alarm control panel and IT connection also so we can operate IT in that building. That, that's actually relatively straightforward, relatively straightforward, but the temporary FACP fire alarm control panel is being put in that building. Once the new one in building C is up and running, we'll be able to take that one out.
Just a quick question from aesthetics for the, I think it's the second to last picture of the extension of the gym, that, that we have the old stone, the, yeah. That's not going to be there, is it?
Yeah, yes, it is, actually.
Oh. Oh, okay. So what is this other? What's the wooden, what's the additions will have what?
The wood will be stucco, so it'll be still a stucco and that's, that's actually really exposed aggregate with very large pieces. I'm not sure what you exactly call those panels. But it'll be a combination of stucco, which we have in the building. Right now, it's a stucco. You'll see the, the top is stucco. So those walls and plywood will be stucco, it'll be the same color as that. So building will be, continue to be a combination of stucco and that big, heavy rock kind of exposed aggregate.
Was that something we value engineered out, or was it always?
No, that's always, as far as I, my understanding, it's always been a project like that. Yeah, thank you.
Wow. So I guess that's kind of, um, keeping some of the old.
That's correct.
Well, I mean, I, I, I'd be in favor of, of your analyzing the cost of what it would take to cover that up.
Uh, sure, I mean, it's something I, we'd have to, I, I don't know what would be involved, actually. We'd have to talk to the architects about how you would design that, but it's not, it... Well, I'm sure we can look into it.
Yeah. I mean, there used to be that kind of old stone on Fortieth, right, at MacArthur Bart, right under the overpass. It still is on the other part, but they came in in one day and they covered that up.
Oh, really?
I mean, it, they just put some chicken wire and some studs and plastered it over, and it looked a whole lot better.
Okay. Yeah, I, uh, I, I don't know the whole design rationale, I mean, perhaps, uh, Mr. Cybert could give us some more information on that.
It would be the oldest building on that site, right? I mean, so it, it conceivably, there's some history, right? But it is pretty, yeah.
It, it may be that one of those stones has, uh, Melody Dice was here and something else.
You know what, actually, it's one up there.
There may be a dual purpose to Miss Dice's desire to cover that up.
Your initials are carved, who is TK?
Exactly, right? Oh, my gosh. That is crazy.
I'm used to, at this point, there being other timelines. That's not on, on today's presentations, are we not doing the timeline?
Oh, I'm sorry, that, yes, I, I was, I, I apologize for not having a timeline here. I, I was on vacation last week and was not able to do that. My team put this together, so it could be in the board packet, which was a request, but I can certainly put the timeline together, the two, the, the eight-week look ahead that we've had in the past, and we'll do that in future updates.
Because we're not opening on time now, right? The, the high school's not gonna open in January.
The high scho, the high school right now, um, I don't know if you wanna speak to that.
I can speak to that, uh, as I kind of alluded to just a little bit ago. Um, the high school building itself will be complete, the dilemma for us is that the elevator, if we, we can't put the elevator in there, uh, without holding up progress in the rest of the facility, um, and, and the deck. So due to that, uh, so you could say, in, in essence, it's not complete without the elevator and, and the deck. Otherwise, uh, it could be occupied and used, uh, but we won't get approval, I guess, to use it without the elevator being approved by DSA and...
Correct.
And being in place. So due to that fact, uh, we won't be able to move the students there until April or May, um, is my best guess right now.
And we didn't foresee this as a delay?
I'm sorry, what?
This wasn't foreseeable as a delay?
This was, this was all due to the East Bay Mud coordination. If you recall, we had a, uh, we discovered that in February, a twenty-four-inch pipe right along the curb that was not in any surveys, that first took us a while to figure whose pipe it was. East Bay Mud then had to go through their, their archives to see if it, in fact, it had, it found a kill notice. We then had to get in their queue, they would not, East Bay Mud would not allow us or any contractor to cut that pipe, even though it had been what they call had a, had a kill notice, meaning it was no longer in use. We had to schedule their crews to come out and tap the pipe, camera it, and then cut it. It only took them a day to do that, but we were not able to do that until August seventeenth of this year. And we, so we couldn't do all our utility connections, of all the utilities in the street, it's a loop system on the campus, so you have to kind of do it from the street inward. We were not able to do that until, starting August seventeenth. That work is now complete, it took us about six weeks to do, but the only access to that, that community commons is what you see right here through between Buildings C and D, there's, Caltrans wouldn't let us come off of, off of San Pablo, and the only width where you could actually get trucks in there, as we started doing the building construction, was this gap you see right here. And so that East Bay Mud pipe was, and then having to be in the queue for them to come out and do the tapping and cutting is what delayed, uh, us to be able to start, uh, utility, in, utility construction within the community commons. We're now done with that, so we can now actually close this in, but this is, what you're seeing right here is that's where the elevator and stair go. And, um, we had that, that construction was delayed, because we had to finish, we had to go in and wait until East Bay Mud did their work to do all the site utilities that are inside that community commons.
And I'll add that we did try to leverage some inside contacts at East Bay Mud, and so did Sabrina Landreth, and we hit a wall, pretty much. It was, um, uh, quite the impressive bureaucracy. Uh, so we got a lot of flat-out nos, even, uh, from some board member contacts with East Bay Mud that, uh, who attempted to help us.
So, okay, so I guess my question is, how are we looking on the overall project finishing on time?
So, uh, the, like, the, the overall project, the only other issue is the Building C steel, which I mentioned earlier. And, um, the DSA changes, which then took us, we had to do, took about three or four weeks to do those changes, took us out of the fabricator's queue.
Yeah, I got that.
We got back in, and so, and we picked a month up by doing, resequencing the ground floor slab. We have another month we're trying to pick up by looking at, doing some pull scheduling, some other techniques to pull that back. So right now, we're looking at, at, uh, July completion instead of June, we're trying to see what we can do to bring that back in.
Okay, so that's what I, so we're in July, okay. Um, and then, if you go back to the first slide, I'm, I, I've been looking at it, it actually, the building ends, uh, so you can see down into that quad area, and it's pretty cemented. So can you make sure that that's gonna be a play area?
I'm, oh, to the, the older drawing.
Yeah, my very first question, I kept looking at it.
The older drawing.
Overall site plan.
Yeah, so there, it's very clear it's a play area, but the second slide, I guess.
There we go.
Yeah.
See how they have all the concrete member paths?
Oh, I see, so it, uh, what you see there, it's a little, this is, this view is really, is, is a little bit difficult, because Building B blocks it.
It, but it doesn't, though, that's the thing, is that dark gray line represents the edge of the building.
So, so I guess the question, Mr. Baker, is that concrete there, or is that grass?
It's a combination, you see there are two large, there are two grassy areas there, that have seat walls. Along the edge of Building B, what you don't see is there are seat walls and landscaping along that edge.
Oh, so that is blocked, okay.
Yeah, which is, which comes out of...
But there isn't a large play area there.
Right, it, it's, it's, it's not a, with a, like a playground per se. Um, I, I think I, I would, I would defer to Mr. Cybert to talk about the design philosophy behind that space.
Well, he had it as a grassy area.
Yeah, no, it's not a grassy, it's primarily hardscape with some grassy areas, that is correct.
So can I suggest that perhaps you look at bringing that particular area? Because I know it was a presentation, so I know it's not gonna be too hard to locate, but I know that it has been discussed at some point, maybe not while you've been here, but from, um, uh, Mark's, uh, the firm, I know that they, this has come up in terms of what the, um, what that space looks like as a play space, or as a, um, even some, whatever the tools or, um...
The poles.
The pole, whatever, all that stuff. A lot of that happened, that conversation has happened before, but it'd be great to have a refresh, just to bring people up to...
The crawly, uh, box.
Yes.
Oh, I will say this, is that we do, I mean, that, again, that work's not gonna be done until, that concrete won't be poured until probably April.
No, 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 not you, not a current, but what the image, or you know, what the, was presented by architects in terms of what, how they use of that space, because there, it had been a presentation to the board at one point or another.
Oh, I see, okay.
At some point, I just don't, I couldn't tell you like what month or year or whatever, but...
Okay.
But I know that this discussion has happened, but it'd be great to have it come back to the board, to look at it again, to understand what the intended use was, and what the tools and, um, because I know he's, he mentioned the poles and whatever.
I would just like to see what the current design is. I'd like to see a drawing, you know.
Yeah, and there's something else, I think, uh, Member Dice is correct, it would be good to have Mrs. Cybert come back and explain that to me as well, and the board as well. Uh, we'd probably all appreciate understanding how it's to be, could, was planned to be used as a play area. And, Mr. Baker, I'm just recollecting, we cut a lot of stuff out of the budget to, during the value engineering process. One of the things the former CBO here, uh, uh, cut, um, um, just before, when I was coming into the job, was the play structure item that Mr. Affat was just referencing, the, I don't know what it was called, does anyone know what, uh, it was?
It's on that slide, it's on his first slide.
The crawly, okay.
Yeah, that's long gone.
Yeah, so I'm ju, I'm almost wondering, do we wanna reconsider looking at that as we're trying to put more money back into the project with our upcoming agenda items? I just, I, it might be a good idea.
There are several different topics being discussed here, so the first thing is that we can, I think there's probably a really, a good, a really good discussion on it would be what the design of that community commons is. It is primarily hardscape, it's not a lot of softscape right now, and it's also, it's mostly seat walls, it's meant to be kind of a passive space. But I would, I don't know what the design history is, but it's, my point is, is that we're not gonna do that construction in that area for several months, so there's the opportunity to perhaps do some redesign work there, should the board want to direct the, the team to do that. Um, secondly, there is a play structure right above the letter A, for, which is meant to be shared by the pre-K and K through, like, one or two students. Um, that still is in the project. What was taken out was what was called the wall hollow, which is actually a climbing wall, that was gonna be, I believe, uh, between Buildings B and D, and that was taken out in the value engineering. Uh, there, uh, there had been concern also about liability issues and insurance issues with that, with that particular element of the project.
Yeah, I'm not sure if those were valid concerns or not, to be honest with you, but I just think you and I might wanna look at that again.
Okay.
Okay, are there other, uh, questions for Mr. Baker? Any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Baker. Uh, we're onto, uh, our next item, superintendent.
Yes, good evening again, our next item on our agenda regards the issuance of additional, potential issuance of additional bonds under, uh, the Measure J authorization, previously approved by taxpayers, just as a reminder for the board and the public, uh, that, uh, we started to discuss this, uh, at a previous board meeting, or several, a cou, last couple of board meetings, uh, that based on, uh, changes and upgrades to the project, including, uh, the unanticipated one-point-three-million-dollar increase in pool costs by a desired, uh, a different desire, uh, and, uh, pool design, upgraded technology, security, furniture fixtures and equipment, uh, and other costs have, um, led us to believe that we do need to add additional funding to the project, and we have this evening with us representatives, um, from CFW, as well as our bond counsel, Mr. Bill Katie, so I appreciate, gentlemen, you being here. Uh, and we have, I, I think, uh, something in front of the board, which is really informational, but I think our practice has been to put these items as action items, to give the board always the option, uh, is my understanding from, historically, from Mr. Timery, uh, to move forward, if you so chose to move forward tonight, but, uh, otherwise it is an informational item, and the gentlemen are here to answer any of your questions.
Okay.
Yeah, I just had a question about the, um, uh, and I appreciate from the previous meeting, our, our last board meeting as well. Um, but just a little bit more information in terms of the, um, the two thousand and five, um, resolution two? I just wanted to get a little bit more, um, clarity on that. Good luck, whoever.
Charles Strauss, gentlemen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Chris Kera with CFW, very pleased to be here tonight, uh, to answer your questions. We serve as the district's financial advisor, I can answer the financial aspects of the resolution. And if there's any legal questions about the resolution, Mr. Katie can answer those questions. Uh, the reason that we're bringing this...
Just make sure you speak in, into the mic.
Okay, is this better?
That is better, thanks.
Your district has, as you're aware, issued bonds in the past, and from time to time, those bonds are eligible to be refinanced. And, uh, your district has very successfully in the past refinanced bonds. Uh, there is an opportunity at this point to refinance some bonds that were initially issued in two thousand and five. The amount outstanding of those bonds is about two-point-seven million dollars at this point. Um, and the ability to refinance those bonds would be to take advantage of the current lower interest rate environment as compared to the interest rate environment at the time the bonds were issued. Uh, the total amount of the savings of those bonds is just under two-hundred thousand dollars. That's the savings that would go back to the taxpayers, net of all costs. Under normal circumstances, we probably wouldn't bring to you a refunding that would save just two-hundred thousand dollars. In a district of your size, you might want an opportunity of a greater amount of refunding than just two-hundred thousand dollars. Uh, just like, maybe if you could only save twenty dollars a month on your mortgage payment, you may not choose to, to refinance your mortgage for that amount. The reason that we're bringing this potentially, this transaction to you is if this transaction is done simultaneously with the new money transaction, there are some costs that'll be shared by both transactions, and therefore will reduce the impact of the cost of issuance on the new transaction. And for whatever dollars you sell from the new transaction, more dollars will be available for your projects, and less dollars will be going to, for cost of issuance. So the main reason that we have brought this for your consideration is, and it's a separate resolution, is that if you were to decide, uh, to proceed with the refinancing, uh, the refinancing does meet the industry standard of the minimum savings levels. Typically, the rule of the thumb in this industry is you need to save at least three percent of the debt service savings. The savings in this case are a little bit more than that, quite a bit more than that, actually. But given that there's a small amount of bonds we're refunding, it's hard to generate a large amount of gross savings. So, once again, on that basis, the reason we're bringing this for your consideration is it would reduce the impact of certain fixed cost of issuance on the, on the new money bonds, if this refunding were to be done at the same time. And, of course, it would bring back some money back to the taxpayers that you're currently paying in over-market rates. Not a huge amount, not something that would come to you as a standalone, but it would, it would absolutely result in savings to your taxpayers as well.
I have a question, our, our agreement with you, as I understand it, doesn't change the amount of money we pay you, uh, I think it's up to seven million dollars, we pay you a flat fee to CFW. But out of curiosity, I didn't get to ask this question before, if we're saving taxpayers two-hundred thousand dollars, how much, uh, whether it's the underwriters or, and, uh, maybe it's not attorney fees, but how much more is it costing, I'm curious, roughly, or, uh, is it costing two-hundred thousand dollars more to do the additional resolution? Where we're, or is it?
So is the two-hundred thousand gross or net?
Yes, the two-hundred thousand is after all costs.
So it's...
Oh, okay.
Uh, it's, it's a little bit under, it's about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, but that is after all costs.
I see, okay, thank you.
Did I hear you say we're paying seven million dollars?
No, 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 up to, I believe it's up to seven million, uh, we have a flat fee with CFW, so there, I, I, my understanding was that there was no difference in our payment to CFW, whether they have, whether we do this additional cost savings to taxpayers or not.
There will be some incremental fixed costs when you combine both the transactions. There may be some additional bond council fee because of the additional work required. There will be some additional rating fees from the rating agencies, uh, and so there may be some additional fixed costs. But those additional fixed costs are just an incremental fixed cost. They want, to do two transactions, it's not gonna cost you twice as much. Maybe the fixed costs will be a hundred and twenty percent, for example, of what they would have been if you're doing only one transaction. But if you divide a hundred and twenty percent of the costs by two transactions, you're still paying, in my example, sixty percent for each transaction. You still come out ahead, but there will be some fixed costs that are, that, that will be increased. The underwriter, for example, gets paid on a percentage, okay? So the underwriter, the underwriters' fees would correspondingly increase at the same rate, okay? But it's mainly the fixed costs, uh, the cost of the rating agencies will be shared between two transactions. It won't be the same fee, the rating agencies will probably charge a slightly greater fee for having two transactions, but when that cost is shared between the two transactions, the per-transaction cost is gonna be lower. And yes, sir, the savings that are being estimated are after all costs.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, just one more thing, one more, well, I had a couple more questions, but just in terms of this particular transaction. Um, and I saw an alert today about the interest rates holding, um, but definitely they're gonna be, um, it'll be moving up in December, apparently.
It is expected to, that's correct, there's an, there's another Fed, uh, there's another meeting in the middle of December, uh, at the Fed. There is an expectation that interest rates will be, uh, increased at that time. And it's our intent to be able to price these bonds prior to the Fed meeting. Uh, so if the Fed does increase interest rates, we've been able to lock into the, the interest rates prior to that Fed meeting. Uh, it's possible that the Fed won't, uh, raise interest rates, but the expectation, the consensus is that they're most likely to raise it to the December fifteenth, is it December fifteenth or sixteenth, at the December fifteenth meeting.
Okay.
Wouldn't that make our bonds less attractive?
Uh, if we were to go into the market after the Fed meeting, uh, it would mean that we may have to pay, investors may demand a higher rate of interest on our bonds. And if that is the case, it would not be to the benefit of our district, okay? So it's the intent of us to go into the market before the Fed meeting. So if interest rates are raised, it doesn't impact, uh, our interest rate cost.
So there's more money available to us if we can get it done before the interest rate takes effect?
And there's no guarantee that the Fed will increase interest rates, but it's an expect, it's an expectation.
I think I, I don't think I phrased my, my question correctly. From an investor perspective, why would I buy bonds with a lower rate thirty days before the Fed's expected to give me a better rate on the next series of bonds that are issued? So I guess that was my question, doesn't it make it more difficult to sell? So I guess that was my question, doesn't it make it more difficult to sell them at that point?
Yes, your question is, will some investors just say, I'm going to hold on to my cash because I'm going to see what happens with the Feds, and perhaps I'm just going to invest, maybe starting early January, because that's when the interest rates will ripple through. Investors constantly reinvest their money, and there may be some investors that sit out the sidelines, but right before the last Fed meeting where interest rates, where investors were, where the Fed was expected to increase bonds, there was still a demand for bonds that we sold, and it may result in some investors sitting it out and waiting to see what happens with the Feds, but for the most part, we fully anticipate there will be a strong demand for the bonds even at that time. If there is, we find that there is a lack of demand for the bonds, or if there are not sufficient orders for the bonds, the district always maintains the right to pull the pricing, not sell the bonds on that day, and come back in the future at some time that's convenient for them.
Well, just in piggybacking on that one, is there, I know that there was the comment at the last meeting as it relates to the calendar year, or, you know, that it makes us more attractive because of the timing that you have, because of the small, I forgot how it goes now already.
The banks, the end of the year, I think.
It's already gone.
Something to do with the banks, right?
Absolutely, go to that question, but if I could just also answer the gentleman's question, it's just that banks are expecting that mortgage rates are going to rise in the future, but banks will still do mortgages today, if you go and apply for a mortgage, they'll still do it, they understand that they may be locking themselves into a lower rate than they could sell a mortgage at the future, but just like, banks are still selling mortgages and buying, and those securities are being sold, the demand does exist, but you're correct, so that some folks may sit out the sidelines, but it's, we don't anticipate that it's going to be a decline, that there's going to be a substantial decline in demand. Some folks just want to put their money to work. On your question, ma'am, which is, would there be potentially greater demand for these bonds at the end of the calendar year? The answer is yes, there is that potential. These bonds specifically, since we're going to be selling less than $10 million of bonds in a calendar year, these bonds are subject to a bank qualification status. There's certain advantages for banks being able to buy these bonds, since most banks close their books at the end of the calendar year, there's often the case when there's additional dollars available from investors that the banks want to put to work before the end of the fiscal year, or their fiscal year, which is often the case, is the calendar year, and usually after the 15th of December, there's very few bonds that are going to the market, there's just, the market starts shutting down, so at that point, the next time that bonds are typically offered would be around the middle of January. So you are correct in saying, in that there is an anticipation that there would be an additional demand for bonds specifically from banks attempting to put their unused money to work before the end of their fiscal year.
Right.
You're correct.
You said that we have approximately $2.7 million to refinance on-
Yes.
On the 2005 series. Why does the resolution suggest, you know, not to exceed 3.1 million?
Good question.
Yeah.
That number can probably be brought down a little bit, there's a not to exceed number, because there may be, there's a certain cost of issuance associated with that, and the not to, the 3.1 is just a not to exceed number, but the amount of the refunding bonds, the only amount that can be sold is the amount in order to pay off the prior bonds. We're just trying to give ourselves a little bit of a headroom, given that it's a not to exceed number.
The, is our amount that we, our fees that we pay to CFW based on the value of the bonds that we actually end up issuing?
No, sir, it's a fixed fee. Whether you were to sell the 2.7 or 3.1 or 3.5, or 3 million new bonds, it wouldn't change our fee structure. There are some fees, for example, the underwriters' fees, that are paid on a percentage basis.
Yeah.
And, and those are just a percentage, the cost of insurance, if any, to purchase insurance is on a percentage basis, but our fees are on a fixed fee basis.
And I will add to the board, I may have said this last year, but I did ask CFW to reduce their rates, and they did readjust their rate structure and their fees when we went into a renewing agreement.
Okay.
So they brought their rates down in terms of what our agreements were with them.
So it, I think this was your first question, but it doesn't affect the fees that we would pay CFW, whether we're adding this refi or not, is that-
That's correct, yes.
Is that correct? Okay.
So, okay, I'm sorry, when you made your first statement about the not, the up to $7 million, I was under the impression we've paid all our fees for CFW, or we have not?
We don't have an ongoing monthly fee, retainer fee of any kind, and I believe it was, I'm going off of memory because I don't have, I think the first, there are different, different amounts, Mr. Flores, it might correct, I think it was seven, up to $7 million is a flat fee, and I believe it was $50,000 is the fee, but I'm going off of memory now.
Good evening, my name is Emilio Flores, Colby Forest winners. The fee structure that we had in place at the time Measure J was passed, the, the structure contemplated called for large issuance of bonds. We're talking about 30, 20, $15 million issuance of bonds, and the contract reflected a financing program that would have large chunks of bonds. Obviously, in this particular case, we are issuing a substantially fewer amount of bonds, and it did not make sense on the district's side, nor on our side, to continue having that fee structure in place, so what is put in place is a tiered structure, up to a certain amount, we keep our fees to a, to what we're currently at, which I believe is about $65,000. Once we pass a certain threshold, it does bump up, but in this particular case, there is no difference between including the refunding or proceeding solely with the new money transaction. As my colleague Kush had pointed out, the refunding in this particular case is really meant to defer, defray the cost of new issuance bond in order to make sure there's more money available for the projects that you're currently contemplating, and making sure that the bonds that we do issue, and the bonds that the taxpayers will be using, will be going primarily to projects.
And that first threshold, I believe, is $7 million, do you recall?
I think it's seven and a half, it might be 10.
Yeah, yeah, so between zero and seven and a half million, we're not, until we pass that, whatever that threshold was, we're not looking at a different fee.
Correct, and-
In terms of bond issuance.
And to be completely frank with the board, you know, if, even if we were at 7.1 million dollars or 7.6 million dollars, it really doesn't make sense for us to go into that other fee structure.
So that explains it, 7 million wasn't the fee we're paying them, that's the threshold at which-
That's the first threshold, that's right.
The tier is kicking, okay, that makes much more sense.
Correct, we do not, we do not make $7 million.
Well, I was thinking over a $100 million project, a 7% would not be, you know.
Correct, so we do not get paid on percentage basis.
Right, you get a flat, okay. But that, I guess, did we shop other entities, or are we just sticking with the same company that thought we should buy caps this time?
I did start to look at other entities, one of them is, Mr. Flores, would you remind me, the ones I know discussed, is it Triple N or Triple K, I can't remember the name of the company that, I forgot the name.
You told me you'd spoken with KNN.
No, KNN, I'm sorry, KNN. However, what I found is that some of these companies, what they, when I asked them about, would they be willing to give us some quotes, they would not, they weren't very forthcoming on how much work they would do and what they were offering, and so I was a little concerned, and then what I, what I believe is that with the, the help we've gotten from the last five years from CFW, although I did ask them also about other issues in their past and other things that was shared with me about the company, after hearing that and knowing that they have a lot of historical knowledge in helping us and our bonds, and what they were offering for their flat fee of $65,000, I felt like it was a prudent decision to have them continue to help us.
But nobody else gave you a quote?
No, I did not get any official quotes.
Okay.
And again, on the, on the fee structure, it's, it's based, when you say whether it's 7 million or 7.5 or 10, that's on bonds issued?
That is, that is correct.
That's not like, because we have these up to or not exceed, it's not based on the not exceed amount, it's based on what actually ends up getting issued.
It's based on exactly what you will sell.
Okay.
And from that point of view, as Kush Kero was pointing out previously, is that the, in the case of the new money bonds, there is flexibility up to the moment that we price about how much you can sell. So for instance, between now and the day that we sell bonds, there comes another change order for $300,000, we would be able to accommodate that, however, you know, if there's something very substantial, let's say, you know, another couple million dollars in need arises, we would have to, at that point, really discuss the efficiency of the financing in order to cover those costs. So the not to exceed amount is really meant to give the district flexibility up to the moment we price to dictate what that bond amount will be. It's not meant to be a, for lack of a better term, it's a placeholder until we actually price the bonds, because until we price the bonds, everything is on preliminary status, and that's the moment of no return, when you sell the bonds, everything becomes finalized.
Yeah, that makes, that makes sense on the new issuance, it's just on the refi.
On the refi-
We would, we would know what that is today.
So on the refi, what you're seeing is that there are maturities that make economic sense. In this particular case, all the maturities will make economic sense, and we would, we could effectively lower the amount in the, in the refunding to meet that particular exact number, because at the end of the day, on the final, on the final official statement, there will be, you know, $2,710,000, $525, and then 10 cents. That's going to be what the number's going to be.
One other point as to why the authorization is set high, higher sometimes, is when bonds are sold, there's three ways that bonds can be typically sold. They can be sold at par, which is to say a bond which typically has a face value of $5,000, the investor actually pays you $5,000. Or bonds can be sold at a premium. What a premium means, at a five, for a $5,000 bond, the investor actually pays you more than $5,000. They pay you more than $5,000 because then they're also going to demand a market rate, a return greater than the market rate, so if the market rate was 5% for a bond, they're going to say, look, I want to pay you $5,100 for that bond, but I'm going to demand an interest rate of 5.1%, some number higher than 5% in my example, and the purpose of that is, certain times when the investors want to fit certain aspects of their portfolio, they sometimes demand a premium structure, often they demand a premium structure. The flip side is, the bonds may be sold at a discount, it may be beneficial for us to sell the bonds at a discount, which is in my case, for a $5,000 bond, in my example, the investor only pays you $4,900. Now, it doesn't mean the district's getting short-changed, because mathematically, there's an exact offset in the interest rate. If the, if the interest rate was going to be 5%, the interest rate is now 4.9 or some number lower than that. So these, it's very common for bonds to be either sold at a premium, at par, or a discount. If the bonds are sold at a discount, which is something that we've been seeing as a preference in the marketplace currently, it means to, to pay off $2.7 million of bonds, we're actually going to have to sell bonds at a higher face value. You're going to sell bonds, maybe 2.8 or 2.9 million dollars of bonds, you're only collecting $2.7 million of proceeds. That doesn't mean the district is losing out on money, that is exactly offset by the discount structure on the interest rate. The interest rate is correspondingly lowered to offset that. So one of the reasons, in the initial number projections, we're seeing that the market demand is going to be for a discount structure. A discount structure means that we would need to sell $3 million of bonds, in my example, to pay off $2.7 million. It doesn't mean that the district is going to be paying, the taxpayers are going to be paying more over the life, because once again, that is offset in a reduction in interest rates. And there's, there's times when the market, like the current circumstances that we're seeing, where discount structures have a greater demand, and it's to our benefit to price the bonds at a discount, because at that point, we get a much larger audience who's interested in our bonds. And as the gentleman pointed out earlier, one of the concerns when you're selling bonds is, is there going to be sufficient demand, because selling bonds is about demand and supply.
So just, just to add, if I may, so Mr. Baker and I are going to continue to, as we do every couple, every week or two, continue to revise the numbers, revise the numbers, to bring back the board the most accurate numbers regarding our shortfall, but if we think we're 3.2 million short, we may need to go out for 3.5 million, is what you're saying, I think, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And Mr. Katie-
On the new money, and specifically, I think the question was, I know it's a floating number on the new money, but you know exactly how many bonds you're going to be refunding, so how come you can't give the board an exact dollar amount of the not to exceed? Why are you giving yourself a cushion on the refunding? And the primary reason that we're giving ourselves a cushion on the refunding is, if a discount structure is actually to the district's benefit, we would sell the bonds at a discount, but then we would be selling about $3 million for the bonds to pay off 2.7, of course, we get the benefit back in a lower interest rate.
And I just wanted to ask our bond counsel, Mr. Katie, have you heard anything so far that concerns you that you want to clarify for us, that any red flags as our bond counsel?
No. The law requires-
Why don't you wait till you get to the mic before you start responding?
No, what, what has been stated is accurate, in my, in my opinion. The, in a refunding situation, the law, the statutes actually require that the total debt service of the new bonds, the refunding bonds, is less than the total debt service on the, on the bonds that are being refunded. So that, I mean, that could be a dollar, but it at least has to be a dollar, so the total amount of interest and principal on the new bonds has to be less than, than the total amount of principal and interest on the old bonds. So even though the, the amount, the par amount of the refunding bonds, the new bonds, is higher than the old bonds, the total debt service is lower.
So the, the resolution amount is, that we're being asked to eventually consider approving is the par amount, not necessarily the, the debt service amount?
That's correct, yeah.
Because, so maybe that answers my question, which, which was for you, which, if we're, if we have a capacity in our assessed value of $4 million right now, and we need $4 million worth of bonds for the project, or, you know, say 3.5 and 3.5, whatever that number is, can we go out for $3.7 million worth of bonds on a, in order to get 3.5 million dollars? If our assessed value is the 3.5 million, you know what I'm saying?
If your assessed value is-
Oh, can we go beyond the assessed value?
So, so the, you, does your assessed value, is the legal requirement to connect it to the, the debt-
Right.
That's incurred, or the par value that you're going out for?
I don't know if I completely understand.
So I can, I can clarify, John, if you don't mind, if, if we have $4 million exactly of assessed value, and we know we need 4 million, and so it's going to cost 4.2, are we legally allowed to, are we allowed to go out for 4.2 even though assessed value only enables us to go for four? Can that other-
No, you can, you can only sell four.
No matter, because we hit that limit, okay. I think that, Mr. Al, is that correct?
If your bonding capacity is only allowing four, then you can only sell four at that point.
Okay.
You can sell, you can sell bonds at a premium and generate, generate some, something above the four, but that premium has limited uses, it either can be used for, to pay cost of issuance, or it has to go into the debt service fund, it can't be used for projects.
And so if, if we really needed 4 million in cash, we'd either, we couldn't, we couldn't offer 4.2 and a discount structure, we'd have to, we'd have to offer four at par, basically, it sounds like.
Yeah, and it's possible to pay, like I say, at least it's, it's still legally possible at this point, it's a choice that the district can make to pay the, pay at least some of the cost of issuance from a premium, so you could generate a premium, you know, to pay cost of issuance and still keep the four for the projects.
Yeah.
But there, there needs to be a discussion about the pros and cons of, of doing that.
Right. But I'm hopeful we're not going to run up that tight lead to the-
I'm hopeful, too.
Assessable capacity, though.
Yeah.
And need. Are there further, I've got a few more questions, but I don't want to cut others off. Yeah, just a correction to the Agenda Online, Mr. Timery, it seems like, or I don't know if this is your area or whoever saved the PDFs, but the titles seem to be flipped or backwards, that the one that says Series Z is actually the refi, and the one that kind of says it's the refi is Series Z, yeah.
The titles-
The titles that, when you click on them on Agenda Online, the, I think they're inverted from what- from what the actual document is. So, we can just correct that. And, yeah, I mean, I think on the, on the new bond issuance, yeah, my biggest question is, we do want to know what that number is, and maybe this is as much for the superintendent, Mr. Baker, but like, when, when are we going to be able to identify what our need is? Because we don't want to go out for more than our need.
Correct, correct. Our last assessment, I think, and Mr. Baker might not have been in this meeting, but my last, my last pass of this was around 3.2 million. Now, you know, things fluctuate and move, so we're going to keep looking at things and try to give you the most accurate information as we solidify those things that are floating right now. I did double back and check with the construction company and the subcontractor on the soccer turf field, to find out that it wasn't quite what, clear that I was giving them, how would I say this? It wasn't quite what I expected there. There were still some issues around the soccer field, and so, we are, I am, we have pushed the subcontractor to go back, and we've had several meetings, because I want to make sure there is no tire rubber, even eventually exposed, for our students. So, we were told that there would be a top layer, for example, where tire rubber would not come into contact with students. I didn't think there was any tire rubber in the infill at all, but the company refused to guarantee that the top layer wouldn't one day wear down. So, we went back and said, "Well, wait a minute." I went back and said, "Wait a minute. The safety of our children is of the utmost importance to us, and anyone who uses the field, so, we don't want any tire rubber, even in the infill, in the middle layer." So, we are, that may, that desire on our part to have the safest soccer field may have a higher cost implication for us, to tune of about $200,000. So, we have a couple of things that are moving on us a little bit, so, we will continue to nail those downs. But my last pass was that it was about 3.2 million. We'll now also look at the play structure, the play, Play Hallow?
Wall.
Wall Hallow, as well, because that was one of the things we cut out of the budget. So, as these things come up and down, we are, but we will continue to give you the most accurate number, so that we have the most accurate number in the next several weeks for the issuance.
Okay. The, this is a 25-year maturity, is that? Is that right, on the new issuance?
The documents will permit us to go up to 30 years. Part of the, the actual term of the bonds is going to depend a little bit on market rates at the time we sell the bonds. We're limited to, given the estimate that you've provided to taxpayers at the time of the election of $60, we're limited to the amount of dollars we can garner every year. If interest rates are favorable, we can reduce the term. If interest rates move away from us slightly, we can increase the term. Under no circumstances will the term exceed 30 years without coming back to the board for approval.
Okay. And I think legally, we're permitted to go up to 40 years, is that right?
Yes, sir. For most type of bonds, I can defer to Mr. Katie, but for the type of bonds we're selling, current interest bonds, you're correct. Legally, we could go up to 40 years. My understanding, Mr. Katie, is, if we're going beyond 30 years, the board must make a finding for the reasons to go beyond 30 years?
Right. If you go beyond 30 years, you have to make a finding that the useful life of the assets that are being financed exceed, exceed 30 years.
Which would be the case if the dollars are being used to construct a building, but, so yes, sir, essentially, you are correct. Legally, the bonds could go up to 40 years. Our intent is to keep it to 30 years or less. The exact term of the bonds will be determined based on interest rates at the time of the pricing.
And the length of the refi, is that going to be the same as the length of the new bond issuance?
It can be no longer, it can be shorter, but it cannot by law be even a day longer. So, it'll be equal to or less than the term of the bonds that are being refinanced.
Yeah, but the Series Z, I think you answered it inversely. The refi will be equal to or more than than Series Z?
No, the refi will be less than Series Z.
Yeah.
But it'll also be less than the term of the bonds that are being paid off.
That were originally, got it, got it.
So, it's, in this case, if you have a 15-year mortgage, for an example, you can't refi it to a 30-year mortgage to reduce the payments. You cannot extend the term in a refinancing. So, any savings in your payments are not coming by extending the term. Any savings in your payments are being generated by a reduction in the discussed.
Okay, that's good to know.
So, something that was brought up at the last meeting was the $60. It was mentioned that, basically, taxes would not go up because of that $60 cap, but that's not accurate, right? When we sell more bonds, either the term has to be longer to pay them off, or we have to get closer to that $60 if we're under it now, correct?
The, when we sell bonds, a projection is made that the tax rate will not exceed $60.
Right.
And, under Prop 39, and Mr. Katie, please correct me if I'm wrong over here, you have to make a projection that the tax rate will not exceed $60. There is no absolute guarantee that the tax rate would not exceed $60 under any circumstances in the future, because the tax rate is based on the total assessed valuation of the district, which varies over time, as well as the total bond repayments. The bond repayments amounts are predetermined. Assessed valuation, obviously, as you know, has been increasing quite rapidly in Emeryville over the last couple of years, but, and it increased about 11% last year. The projection for assessed valuation on an average increase is 4%. But if we were to go into another recession a couple of years from now, and if property values were to crash, and if assessed valuation in Emory would have dropped by 50%, I'm not saying it will, but if that hypothetical case, the tax rate in that case would exceed $60. So, the $60 limit that is required by Prop 39 is a projection of what the tax rate will be. But no district, or no one can actually absolutely guarantee with 100% level of certainty that the tax rate would not exceed a certain amount.
Right. But even with that cap, and I just want to be clear, if we sell more bonds, people of Emeryville will be paying more taxes.
If we, when the voters were, when the voters voted in the election, they had estimated that the taxes would be $60 per 100,000 of assessed valuation, was the estimate provided. We cannot sell bonds if the, if we're projecting, and the next series of bonds, the reason we're limited, sir, in this case, to about $4 million of bonds, is because if we sold more than $4 million of bonds, the tax rate is likely to exceed the rate that was estimated to voters at the time of the election. I'm not sure if I'm answering your question, but-
So, I'm going to try one more time.
Yes.
If we don't sell the bonds, the taxes that the citizens of Emeryville are paying will stay as they are now. If we do sell the bonds, they're going to increase, because we now have more debt to pay off, and therefore, we're either going to have to get closer to that $60, or whatever, or increase the term length. So, by passing these bonds, we're putting a larger burden on the taxpayers of Emeryville.
When the election was passed, the voters voted in $95 million of bonds, and they did estimate a tax of $60 per 100,000 at that time. So, if the, yes, if the district were to have issued no bonds, there would be no tax.
Right.
And if bonds are issued, as was presented to the voters, over time, those bonds will be repaid by tax revenues. So, sir, if you're saying, by selling $3 million worth of bonds, is the taxpayer going to be paying back that $3 million of bonds over time? The answer is absolutely yes. Those bonds are paid back from property taxes.
And we are basically, to elaborate, I guess, I understand, remember Pat's point, but I guess I would also add the point that we are basically abiding by what the taxpayers have already approved, and when they voted for the bond.
That is correct. Yeah. I just, it was implied that we would not be burdening the taxes, the taxpayers more than we did last time. And so, I just want to be very clear that, you know, we shouldn't do things like this lightly.
Absolutely not, sir.
You know, it's not as if there's a, you know, I have a very large available to me on my credit card, because Citibank thought I was not such a risk, but it's not a good idea for me to go all the way to the max, just because they thought so at the time. So, that's my point, and it does cost us more. We're going to have to pay for these bonds.
These bonds will have to be paid back. They will be paid back by property taxes, and our recommendation, please understand that when we came to your board, we did not come with a recommendation to sell bonds, we wanted to make you aware of an opportunity. My recommendation would be that if there is another source of funding that the district has access to, that does not require the bond sale, that would meet your needs, absolutely, that's the first source you should go to. If there's any state aid that you can garner, if there's any other funds that are available, you should use those funds first. If there are no other funds available, and you do need the dollars, then, yes, the bonds are available for that purpose.
So, I think you're going back and forth on the difference between the tax amount that one pays and the tax rate. And the tax rate is $60 per 100,000, and that tax rate is what voters approved to tax themselves in order to support our school construction needs. The tax rate dipped well below that, because assessed value went up, and so, we are merely getting to the tax rate that voters have given us, which is $60 per 100, that has not changed. In terms of absolute dollars, people will pay more, because there will be more bonds to finance.
That's my point.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
The, we can refinance the Series Z bonds at our election, is that right? Or, is there some limit on that?
The bonds that are being, that are being proposed to sell, the new money bonds that are being proposed to be sold, are subject to prepayment. The typical municipal bond structure, and what's required by the law, is that the bonds must be subject to prepayment at the 10-year mark. And at 10 years from now, they can be prepaid with no penalty. If we are in a situation, however, that the bonds, that maybe three or four years from now, interest rates are even lower than they are today, there is a mechanism to refinance that bond, one time, in advance of the prepayment date. And the way that works is, you sell new bonds, you deposit those monies irrevocably into an escrow. That escrow pays off the bonds that we're proposing to sell in 2015, and the new bonds, the old bonds are no longer a liability of the district, and the new bonds that funded the escrow, which are presumably at a lower interest rate, that's the only reason you would refinance them, are the only liability of the district on an ongoing basis. So, long answer to your question, sir, they are subject to repayment. The standard repayment provision is 10 years with no prepayment penalty. There is a mechanism that if interest rates and market conditions are favorable prior to the 10-year mark, that you could refinance them prior to that as well.
Okay. And I had a, thank you for that, very specific question from Mr. Katie. If you, what is the mandatory sinking fund redemption provision? What is all of that about?
Well, that's, that's if, there's a concept of term bonds. Usually, bonds are issued as serial bonds, that's the standard method. In other words, in other words, say you have a 25-year maturity bond, you, a certain amount of that principal comes due every year. Those are called serial bonds. And so, a person, an investor, can buy a bond that matures in the first year, or in the seventh year, or, you know, any of the 25 years. And those are, that structure is called serial bonds. And there's principal and interest payments paid each year on those serial bonds. Some investors, particularly, in some, in some cases, it's beneficial to combine those maturities into so-called term bonds. So, you might, a typical structure might be, for the first 20 years, you have serial bonds, where you have principal coming due each year, and then you combine the last five years into one bond that is due in 2000, or in the 25th year. So, that would appear on the maturity schedule that you see, there's a gap between the 20th year and the 25th year, and that 25th year bond is larger, because it combines, you know, the 21st year, the 22nd year, all the way to the 25th year. So, mandatory sinking fund redemption is a way of paying principal in the 21st year in that case. So, there's one bond that, you know, is due in the 25th year, but the structure is set up so that a certain amount of principal is actually paid from that, on that term bond in the 21st year, and the 22nd year, and the 23rd year. It actually, you know, when somebody explained that to me the first time, it took me a while to try to absorb that. But, lots of times, the reason that that is done, a lot of times, is because the larger investors, like insurance companies and other financial institutions, they want, they want to buy bonds of a bigger, you know, a bigger amount, instead of a smaller amount. So, that's typically the reason that you do a term bond.
And you just decide that when they're being sold, to see who wants what?
Right. While the, the underwriters analyze the market, they, you know, at that particular day, as to, you know, what maturities are selling good, who they're, you know, who they see their customers as being, and what they demand. And they make, you know, during the pricing period, which is usually a few, couple hours, they make adjustments if needed in order to attract investors. But that's right, it's decided at that time.
And is there, I guess, the only reason we'd go one way or another is, it's going to be to our benefit?
Right. It's going to result in a- Right, it's going to result in a better sale and lower interest rates.
And in some cases, Mr. Katie, it also may result, it also may be that there isn't a specific demand for a serial maturity in that year. And, Mr. Katie, gave you the legal explanation. From the financial aspect, what, the difference between a school bond and a home loan, is if you were to go for a home loan, you would apply for one 15-year loan. Yes, you'd make principal payments over the life of the bonds, but you would be borrowing at the 15-year rate. The difference when you sell a school bond, is we actually, the underwriter actually looks for different investors, a series of different investors. Just like with a home loan, you can pay back some principal in the first year. When we're selling school bonds, we're actually looking for an investor who wants to lend the Emory Unified School District money for one year, and that's a one-year loan. Then, we look for an investor, and maybe we can only pay back of the $4 million, maybe we can only pay back $20,000 of principal in the first year. But there's actually an investor who's lending you money for one year. Then, there's an investor that is sought, who would lend you money for two years, for three years, for four years, so on and so forth. The optimal structure, the ideal structure, is it's a serial structure. Every single year, there is a different loan. The advantage of doing that is the short-term interest rate today is probably about 0.25%. The long-term interest rate is probably in the 4.5% range. Any money that we can pay back, any amount of the principal we can pay back in the one-year range, or the two-year range, that we can borrow at the lower interest rate, is actually resulting in a lower cost to the district, because that's money you're borrowing at less than the 25-year rate, or the 30-year rate. So, the perfect structure, in the perfect world, is every bond would be serialized, and serialized means, there's a maturity and a buyer for the bond in every year, maturing every year. Oftentimes, in a bond of this size, which is a relatively small bond, as compared to the typical bonds in the municipal market, you would not find, you may find a buyer who wants to lend you money for one year, two years, three years. For the first 10 years, or first 15 years, it's quite common to be able to find buyers who want to lend you money for those periods of time. But, as you get further out into the maturities, there just may not be a buyer who wants to borrow money for 17 years, who wants to lend you money for 17 years, or 16 years. At that point, you do what Mr. Katie was talking about, you term up the bonds, which is you take a couple of maturities, the maturities of 16, 17, 18, 19, and maybe 20, and group them into a single bond. And that is called a term bond. So, the principal is repaid at the end of that term. What Mr. Katie is referring to as sinking payments, is, since we're grouping together those dollars, we don't want to create a shock or a spike in the tax rate in the year all those monies becomes due. So, even the money may not be due until 20 years from now. In years 16, 17, 18, 19, in my example, you're collecting those tax revenues, you're dropping them into a sinking fund, and those dollars are available to pay the bondholders as required. And that's the concept of a sinking fund. A lot of information, sir, but that's the financial aspect of it.
Very helpful. Yeah. Close for you. Any other questions?
Just get it done.
Okay. Any public comments on this item? All right. Seeing none. I think this is, this is a first reading? Is that-
That's basically correct, and we'll see the gentleman back here seeking your approval on November 18th, I believe.
Okay. Okay, I guess the, the last question I would have is, do you anticipate these documents changing at all between now and November eighteenth? Is there anything that still needs to be worked out, or?
Probably not appreciably, there, there, I think there's a typo or two in there that would need to be fixed, but, uh, those resolutions shouldn't, shouldn't change particularly. What we will have, though, is the preliminary official statement, uh, which is not before you at this point, which is the disclosure document. Uh, that will be, it's a substantial document, you've probably seen those before, uh, that will be available for your review. That's akin to a prospectus for, for a stock transaction.
Mm-hmm, and what are we disclosing? The health of the district and our finances, who lives here?
This is the document that's, excuse me?
Yeah, who live, our residents, or what are the demographics, or?
That's part of it. The, uh, the economy of the area is important. Uh, there's, there's various tables in there that relate to assessed valuation, uh, and who the twenty, twenty largest taxpayers are. It's everything that an investor supposedly would be interested in knowing about, about the district, about its finances, about the, about the local economy, in making a decision as to whether to buy the bonds or not.
And, and what is our current rating?
The district is currently rated double A three by Moody's Investor Services and A plus from Standard and Poor's. That is considered, uh, on the higher end of investment grade uh, for most investors looking to buy bonds.
Okay. Oh yeah, one more question from.
So in terms of the, um, uh, you just mentioned how the, the larger taxpayers in town or the top twenty, I guess, those are all, I mean, we, if I am not mistaken, it's historically been more commercial, um, over residential in this town. And I don't know what the percentage is, even now, it's like seventy at some point, are actually bearing the, you know, have the burden of the taxes? Is that still the case?
One of the tables that will be in the POS, the preliminary official statement, will show the assessed valuation by land use. And it'll actually break down for you how many parcels are commercial, what the total assessed valuation is, uh, and also do the same breakdown for residential as well.
Oh, that's good.
So it's, it's a very, it's actually a very useful table uh, that investors use as well to make a similar determination. Uh, Emeryville being the city that it is, has a substantially, uh, or substantial tax base based in, uh, commercial, uh, real estate and such. Uh, that will be the, the primary burden for the, for the repayment of the bonds.
And is this, is that actually part, well, this is just because I'm educating myself right this very second, but, um, is that one of the primary drivers for such a rating, though? I mean, it's because it's kind of a, or one of them, I guess.
So there are a number of factors that contribute to a, a rating from Standard and Poor's or from Moody's. Uh, in the case of, of Emeryville, uh, what happens is that the substantial size of your tax base is a huge, what we call, credit positive.
Right.
Uh, also, it's a, a tax base per capita. Uh, because Emeryville has so few official residents, um, you know, that, that number is extremely high, and actually skews the hell, the, the wealth indicators for many of those rating agencies. Uh, the rating agency will also take in consideration the type of bond you're selling. In this case, a general obligation bond is considered to be one of the most secure uh, forms of, of borrowing, and it's the most secure form of investments by investors. Uh, so that by itself has a large component to the rating as well. The last part is financial operations and financial management, uh, the overall health of, of the school district. Uh, this particular component of the, of the rating, um, is probably about twenty to thirty percent of the rating. Uh, and it is there because, uh, the rating agencies want to use it uh, against a national scale and various different debt instruments. For a general obligation bond, because of the type of, of obligation that the taxpayers have made, uh, even if the district were to dissolve the obligations of, of the bonds would still exist, and the, the taxpayers of the Emory Unified School District would still be repaying those bonds. Uh, and that's one of the characteristics that make it so secure and veil the district of such low borrowing rates.
Right.
Well, thanks for that, thank you.
All right. Going, going? Any further?
I appreciate the refund information, that was very helpful, so.
Yeah. All right, thank you, gentlemen, for.
Thank you.
Helping us out. All right, we're on to, uh, our last discussion item, uh, item I five.
Yes, good evening. Uh, the purpose of this item is for the board to consider for approval, uh, Resolution Five Regarding Bullying Prevention Month. Uh, very recently, on October thirteenth, the Alameda County Board of Education adopted this resolution and is encouraging all districts, districts in the county to adopt it as well. So we thought it was very prudent to bring this in front of you for your approval. As you know, we've been doing a lot of work last year and this year uh, in bullying prevention, and I thought it made sense to bring this in front of the board for your consideration and approval.
Okay, questions on the bullying prevention resolution? Is, is October the bullying prevention month?
I believe that's correct. Um, I just, I'm looking to see if they were, yes, the title, National Bullying Prevention Month, October two thousand and fifteen.
Okay, that seems like it's, it's coming a little late to us.
Uh, it, it is, it is coming a little late, yes, yes. We, we were very recently alerted by it.
By the county, when, when did they?
October the thirteenth, or, after our packet was already in.
Yeah, after the prior packet. Okay, and, um, are, are we doing anything in particular?
Around bullying?
Yes.
Uh, not.
This month in particular?
No, we're, we're not, for us, it's a, it's an ongoing prevention item, so, no.
You want to talk about what the ongoing work is? I know you brought in a fair amount of bullying.
I could speak to it just for a moment.
Work that's been going on, and, and my son has a curriculum in his classroom.
Mm-hmm. We have, uh, we have a gentleman that helps us named Jeff Kaplan. Uh, he's in a, pretty much a, an expert, I think, in, in bullying and bullying work, and he has trained, uh, a couple of different things. He's trained teachers and staff to recognize what actually bullying is and what it is not, but he's gone further than that to train, uh, staff in teams, small teams with students to address bullying, not, not to confront the bullyer as much as a, but, but to use a national program that's been found to be effective in how to deal with bullying issues with a team approach. And so this is our second year of working with him and, uh, going through that approach on the campus, as well as curriculum in classrooms.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Any public comment? Do we have a motion?
Should we have board comment as well, or?
Oh, yeah, that was, that was a question, okay.
So, um, I'm not a big fan of, of, uh, oh, the de jour things. It's, it seems to me in this, everything has a month or a day or a week, and I feel, I much prefer Dr. Rubio's approach of this is something we deal with every day and work on, and so, um, I want to be very clear that I really support the anti-bullying work and appreciate what we're doing, but probably won't be supporting this resolution, because I just, I find it.
Start awareness.
Just, yeah, I just, you know, there's so many things we need to be aware of, and we need to do them every day, that I just, I, I, I'm always just not a big fan of the current de jour culture, so that's my comment.
Okay.
I have one. As a victim of bullying, um, I have been, I'm certain I'm not alone, but, um, I think it would be great if, I mean, I agree, I think it's kind of like a throwback in timing wise, not you, I mean, it's just what happened. But, um, it would be great to get some type of information annually. I don't know if that makes sense, but just to know what our efforts are in that area.
Yeah, we can add that to our calendar.
We have a lot of kids, we have adults who are bullied all the time. I mean, it's, it's not a one group or, it's not one thing, but I think it'd be valuable to, you know, ensure that, and it, maybe it's October because this came in October, I have no idea, but, but it'd be great to see what type of activities are happening, and, um, and I know what, we had Challenge Day one time, I mean, you know, we've had a number of different activities over the years, but I think if we, if we pin it for the board to get an update or.
I think we'll do it this December, although it's not in the official month, but I'll, I'll ask Mr. Kaplan to come for our early December meeting.
I think it'd be helpful, and I think, um, so with that, I, I do support it, but I do think it needs to be, it needs to have some, something behind it, so.
Okay. Well, I wanted to put it in front of you for your consideration.
No, it's helpful. Did I move?
No, I would just say that it's just, it provides another reminder. Even though you have the programs in place, it is a reminder of, of, of somebody who's just passing by or just not unaware of it, that there are, there are mechanisms that are available.
Did anybody move it?
Uh, no one has moved it.
I'll move it, I'm sorry.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, please. I'm sorry, Member Pat's?
No. Getting ready to vote.
Okay.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Miriam?
Yes.
Member Dice?
Yes.
Member Pat's?
Yes.
President Affeld?
Yes.
Okay, you change your vote?
Look, sorry, but, you know.
The com, the combination is powerful. Anti, anti-bullying. We are on to board reports and announcements. Do we have any board reports and announcements?
Um, I'll still be around, but, uh, but I do, that requires me to step down, so I, I have maybe two more meetings, and, um, and with absolute respect for each and everyone at this table, absolutely. Um, I'm gonna miss you all, but I do have something else I could do on a Wednesday, but I don't know exactly yet what, but, um, but no, I, it has been, um, so, I'm sure there's something else, I'm sure there's something else, but, um, but I think thirteen years is enough, I'm thinking, yeah. Thirteen is a bad number, too, I mean, it's not the best number out there, but, um, but I do want to, um, commit to each of you, however way I can help and support, and, um, uh, I've learned a lot, and I grew up with this district, and in many ways. But, um, but I will be stepping down. My last day is December sixth, which happens to be my father's birthday, so there's some, huh, and all that, but, um, but I really do appreciate everything and everyone, and, um, yeah, I saw you last night, you only got me a couple more times, but, um, but, um, definitely, that's, that's just my update, my, my board announcement, so. Family comes first, right? Yes.
Well, we will, uh, save our, uh, comments and accolades and tears for, for another time.
I'll have emotions, I'll be a joy.
Yeah, at least I will.
That's just my story.
Yeah, thank you for obviously letting us know, and, and your thirteen years of service, but we, we will need to properly recognize that.
I appreciate, and I, and I'm here, I'm here, Emory is my heart, so.
All right, do we have any other less weighty, uh.
Sorry.
Announcements, reports? We could have skipped this item.
I know, right? I know, right?
Who wants to follow that? Okay, I think, I think we're, we're, everyone's passing after that.
I'm sorry.
Uh, do we have a calendar review?
Sure, uh, November the fifth will be our city schools meeting at five thirty P.M. Our next citizens oversight committee will be November the twelfth, also at five thirty P.M. And our next school board meeting will be November the eighteenth at six P.M.
Okay, and, uh, we are now going to adjourn the board to close session at ten thirteen.